Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, fellow supervisors. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to begin by asking Pastor Griff Boatier to come up and lead us in the invocation. And I apologize if I ruined your name.
Not at all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. God of all glory and Lord of all life, we come before you this morning in faith believing that you will grant us your wisdom and guidance throughout the process of this meeting. We live before you the elected leadership of Mojave County who are invested with the authority, administrative power, and vision to develop this region's future. Theirs is both the privilege and the responsibility to govern this territory and its people, equip them to face the challenges and the changes necessary to benefit our citizenry. May we give you all the praise and glory for your grace and generosity to us. These things we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have Supervisor Moss on the telephone?
I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to call for an executive session to be held on July the 6th, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38, 431, 43, subsection A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll be moving on to the official business to come before the board this morning. We'll start out with Attorney Ekstrom, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Do we have anything this morning?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee or legislative reports, starting with Supervisor Moss. Do you have any reports?
I have no report.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our quad-state local authority meeting. The Sonoran Desert Tortoise listing is to be announced September 30th by Fish and Wildlife. It will be decided to list or not, then there'll be a one-year plan. The Desert Landscape Conservation Cooperative Steering Committee meeting and a local government work group is still moving forward. A little concern that Havasu might decide to be a pilot area. We finalized our budget that I presented previously in the executive director's contract. We also voted to support the Nevada State Legislature Resolution on Raven Proactive Action. Also had a Waters of the U.S. webinar. It went over the recently finalized EPA and Army Corps Clean Water Rule. It was hosted by the Administrator for the Office of Water at the EPA. The speaker was Gibb Owen. He's the Assistant to the Army Corps of Engineers. He started by stating the webinar was put together to bring some clarity to the rule, which I don't think it did, but, and answer questions folks have in regards to why this rule is important, why streams and wetlands matter. They also wanted to talk about how they developed the rule and specifically what's in the rule. First subject they talked about was why streams and wetlands matter. They said the health of our rivers, lakes, and coastal waters depend on the streams and wetlands where they begin. We need clean water upstream to have clean water downstream. With this rule, they are protecting the 60% of streams in the United States. He said the EPA is more clearly protecting those streams that flow seasonally only when it rains and millions of acres of wetlands that are not clearly protected by the rule today. He added that more than one-third of our threatened and endangered species in the U.S. live only in wetlands, and importantly, wetlands provide important water storage functions, protect from floods, and recharge downstream waters. He went into about the importance of keeping our waters clean so that we can have healthy fish. He said the headwater streams are vital to downstream habitat, both in terms of providing water, but also providing areas for spawning and for the growth of young fish. He went on to say that drinking water from these streams prove approximately, provide for approximately 117 million people, or one in every three Americans. He also said the water flowing from streams, the wetlands end up in the rivers, lakes, and bays by our homes. By protecting upland waters, the Clean Water Rule protects water bodies like the Chesapeake Bay, Pugetstown, Great Lakes, and the Gulf of Mexico. Talked about why the rule was developed to begin with. He said they set out to do this rule in response to two Supreme Court cases, in particular one in 2001 and one in 2006. The rule that was developed is set out to meet the Supreme Court standard, which to apply the science rather than relying on existing rules reliance on interstate commerce. He said that what the rule does is it is more clearly defined and protects tributary tiers and tier, and tier tributaries and other waters, provides certainty, reduces frequency of analysis of water, protects regional water treasures, and focus on streams, not ditches. He went over the jurisdictional changes under the new rule, said that the rule language is unchanged when it comes to traditionally navigable waters and interstate waterways. They made changes to the definition of tributaries. They are jurisdictional under the old rule, but tributaries in the old rule were not defined, so they've added a definition to make the rule more transparent, more predictable, and clearer. Lastly, he said, adjacent waters are changed a bit under the new rule. Adjacent waters under the current rule, the agency asserts jurisdiction over adjacent wetlands, but the EPA thought that the scientific analysis demonstrated clearly that open waters adjacent to navigable waters and tributaries should be their jurisdiction as well. Next, he talked about the two categories of waters that are subject to case-specific evaluations, which will be jurisdictional only, where the case-specific analysis shows they have a significant nexus. The first group that are in paragraph A7 are for the five types of waters that can be found to be similarly situated. Then, under paragraph 8A, it would be waters within a 100-year floodplain area, where it extends beyond 1,500 feet a year, or water within 4,000 feet of navigable water and tributary. Finally, he got into ditches. Emphasized that the final rule narrows the jurisdiction over ditches from what the current policies and guidance documents that existed for the agency today. He said they're focus goings. He said in order for a ditch to be classified, it would still need to meet the definition of a tributary. He then said that putting exclusions in the rule for the first time regarding tributaries, he believes they have narrowed the jurisdiction regarding ditches. I believe we'll have some problems with that in Mojave County in the future. Lastly, he talked about agricultural under the new rule. He said the new rule protects those waters that are necessary for farming, ranching, and forestry. The new rule set out to make sure that the EPA was not creating new permitting requirements for America's farmers. Permitting exclusions would still apply as they did under the old rule to normal farming, ranching, and conviction, ranching, and conservation practices. He ended by stating that the new rule does not regulate new types of water. It does not regulate most ditches, erosion features, or groundwater, or farm ponds. It does not regulate land use, but sets out to protect water quality. He said it does not change any of the policies on water irrigation or water transfer. It does not regulate puddles. He said the new rule sets out to preserve all of the current policies and the status of stormwater systems municipality, but it does not regulate tile drains. I think we've seen some contradiction to what his statements were. I also participated in the White House monthly call with the National Associations of Counties. It was with the Office of Budget and Management, Sean Donovan. He gave an update on the budget and what the OMB is currently doing right now. He spoke about the sequestration, the appropriations bill. He said June is the hard appropriation season. Multi-bills have already moved through the House floor on the budget. They expect budget bills to be coming to the Senate hopefully next week. He said Congress and the county has a simple solution to make, moving forward, to help moving forward on the budget. He mentioned the President laid out his budget proposal in February. His proposal would reverse sequestration completely. He mentioned that when sequestration went into effect, the country was on the front, the county was on the front lines. Counties lost hundreds of jobs, and it cut back economic process. Programs cut, for example, were Head Start, Direct Assist to Counties, housing vouchers, et cetera. Two years ago, folks from both sides of the aisle came together under the Murray Ryan deal to reverse a portion of the sequestration for 14, 15. Donovan said it contributed to the economy, growing $300,000 jobs. He said we are facing a return to full sequestration if Congress doesn't act on October 1st of this year. If we do not act, we will have the lowest level of discretionary funding in over a decade. The President's plan to reverse it completely for non-defense spending and match it dollar-for-dollar with defense spending. Reversing sequestration would be paid for through smart changes in mandatory programs and closing wasteful loopholes. He did not expand on that further, though. He mentioned the Republican Congress remains to have sequestration in their budget proposal. He gave several examples of what the House is doing that will hurt the American people, in his opinion. He said the House passed a criminal justice bill, which cut $5 million on the criminal justice, including vital funding for the sheriff's departments around the country. It would lower support for juvenile justice. Another example he gave was that today the House started four considerations on transportation and housing. This would cut funding for Tiger by 80%, which would be the lowest level it has ever been in history. He said the demand for Tiger is huge, and we should be increasing it. On the housing side, he said the Housing Trust could not be funded, but House Republicans want a 24% cut in housing vouchers, and no Housing Trust fund would be funded. Another example of the cuts the House wants is that they want to cut the homeless assistance grants by $300 million, which is below 10% of the President's request, and this includes veterans. He said the statistics prove that the program reduces costs by reducing the number of veterans and homeless individuals who use our ER rooms. The cost of mental health and community health, he said, we do not yet have a health bill that would allow him to give specifics, but overall allocation on the House Republican bill is 10% lower than the President requested. He said if we do not raise the budget back to before sequestration went into effect, we're going to shortchange the priorities that counties care about. He said the President is determined to not let sequestration go forward. He's afraid that if we don't fix the problems now, we can't fix it next year because next year is a presidential election year. The Murray Ryan deal was a two-year deal. He said he would like to see another two-year deal made. He would like to make it permanent, but would like it to have a minimum two-year deal. He said the President will do all in his power to make sure the sequestration does not go through. He asked for NACO's support of getting rid of it. NACO has not made a decision, and obviously, they're spending more money than they don't have. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Watson, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Supervisor Angus.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Last week, I traveled to Washington, D.C., to meet with members of our Arizona delegation and others to discuss the transfer of public lands. You're going to be hearing a lot about this today. We have several items in our agenda and a special guest to speak about it. Mojave County is a member of the American Lands Council. Utah Representative Ken Ivory, author of Utah's Transfer of Public Land Act of 2012, joined me as we went around the Capitol, or I should say, I joined him. We went around the Capitol speaking with senators and congressmen about the plight of the West and the need for Western states to have control over their public lands. We started at an event sponsored by Women in Agriculture. This organization was very receptive to the idea and pledged their support. Many of the attendees were from eastern states who had no idea about what the West has been going through with the federal mismanagement of public lands and the one-size-fails-all policy of the federal agencies in regard to managing that land. We met with Senators McCain, Flake. We met with Senator Mike Lee from Utah, Washington State Congresswoman and House Republican Leadership Chair Kathy McInnes Rogers, Congressman Trent Franks, and staffs from Representative Matt Salmon's office. Representative Ivory separately met with many members of his Utah delegation, including Representative Mia Love and many more. All seemed very interested and receptive. I was surprised by how little our representatives understood about this movement. This trip was set up for Senator McCain. I told Senator McCain that I believe personally, the man or woman who champions this issue will go down in history as the man or woman who saved the West, and I mean that with every fiber of my being. Senator Lee invited Representative Ivory and me to attend the Republican Senate Staff Steering Committee meeting this past Tuesday morning. Representative Ivory made his presentation about the only solution big enough and received a very warm reception from representatives from that committee. They asked very good questions, most having to do with the process. What would the transfer look like? That's the question that's on everyone's mind, and we'll be talking more about that today. The American Lands Council approach is four-pronged: educate, negotiate, legislate, and litigate. It is a full-time task to educate people in this country about the damage that is happening here in the West. The American Lands Council is an organization that was put together by counties, and they hired Mr. Ivory to be their president. If you haven't heard Representative Ivory speak passionately about the public lands issue, I invite you to go to the W, to the American Lands Council website, americanlandscouncil.org, and listen to the many videos, read the articles, policy statement, news accounts, and most of all, the historic references to the transfer of public lands. It's very fascinating. Every Western state except California has had some kind of legislation introduced, but Utah has definitely led the way with the Transfer of Public Land Act of 2012. This year, Utah has allotted $4 million to hire the best attorneys and constitutional experts to take this fight to Washington. It will only happen if our own elected officials are courageous and steadfast. It's happened before. At one time, all the states east of the Rockies were federally owned, but they lobbied for and got their lands back. Why the difference? Why is it different here in the West? For those listening and are unfamiliar, by public lands, we mean the lands that were intended to be multiple-use federal lands, not national parks, military bases, Indian reservations, or congressionally designated wilderness areas. The goal is to see that federal public lands become state public lands to preserve and protect recreational access, ecosystem health, hunting and fishing opportunities, and valid existing rights such as mining and grazing. The key public policy objectives from the American Lands Council is to retain public ownership of public lands, federal public lands shall become state public lands to be managed in accordance with state and local plans, and improve efficiency of wildlife control, local and tribal government with adequate wildlife prevention, and control resources, and develop interstate, interagency cooperative agreements necessary to combat wildfires effectively, and increase local involvement and accountability. Ensure state-based public land management activities are consistent with local government plans, policies, and objectives to protect use rights, protect all valid existing rights and multiple uses, and enhance the viability of compatible land-based livelihoods, and preserve customs and culture. Preserve and protect important wild, scenic, and cultural and economic resources. What the Western states are arguing is that they just want to be equal to the eastern states where public lands have been transferred. The Supreme Court recently reiterated that our nation was and is a union of states, equal in power, dignity, and authority. Where the allocation of powers between the national government and the states enhances freedom first by protecting the integrity of the governments themselves, and second, by protecting the people. The Supreme Court in Shelby County versus Holder emphasized the fundamental significance that the constitutional equality of the states is essential to the harmonious operation of the scheme upon which the republic was organized. Failed federal land management accentuates the need to remedy the inequality of federal control over the lands, liberties, and the rights of Western states to govern themselves. A recent study published by the Poverty and Environmental Research Center, that's PERC, exposes the glaring disparity between productivity on state and federal lands through the West. The study reveals that the federal government loses 27 cents for every dollar it spends on land management. That is a loss to taxpayers of approximately $2 billion per year. States, on the other hand, generate an average of $14.51 for every dollar they spend managing public lands. The study declares by nearly all accounts, our federal lands are in trouble, both in terms of fiscal performance and environmental stewardship, and concludes states have clearly demonstrated their ability to generate greater returns from land management than the federal government. Now, let's talk about PILT, which we do all the time, payment in lieu of taxes. In 1976, the government created a policy to hold on to the land in the West. As a concession, they agreed to pay this money that is literally pennies on the dollars of what it's worth. One of the big problems with PILT is that it is discretionary, and that means every year it has to be reallocated and fought for, and it's worse than that. It gets to be used as a bargaining chip in our highly-charged partisan political world. We here in the West base our budgets on money that we believe will be coming in, but we just really don't know on a year-to-year basis what will happen. But the process is even worse. Congress gets to use this as a bargaining chip. So, for example, last year, we spent an ignorant amount of time pleading through NACO and our other lobbying agencies for the money that they themselves say they owe us, but in order to get the $400 million due, the states in the West, Congress had to make a little deal. And what was that deal? In order to secure the $400 million in our promised PILT, which ended up in the farm bill, we had to accept an extra $2 billion in food stamps. This happens every year. We are dealing with a government that is broke and getting broker, and they're using this as a way of extorting money for what they want. We will be discussing more of this later, as I said. I hope you all get involved. Again, that's the americanlandscouncil.org. It's time for the West to be treated equally by the federal government. I also, just sort of related, I spoke to our delegation about some issues that are solely Mojave County problems. I spoke in depth to Senator McCain's office about our wild burrow problem. Nick Matiella has informed me that Senator McCain's office is going to call on the BLM and see where they are on all of this, and start putting pressure on them to follow their own policies. I did get an email from him today, and that process is starting. I received assurances from Senator Flake's offices as well. I briefed them on the status of our lawsuit with ADWR and our fight for standing. Again, surprised by how little the delegation knew about the legislation they voted on, the Bill Williams Water Rights Settlement Act. But that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. Very informative report, and I look forward to learning more about American Lands Council and picking back our lands, and I think the state can manage our properties because we live here. So, anyway, we'll go on now to the county administrator's report.
I have no report this morning, Madam Chairman.
All right, thank you. There are no meeting minutes to approve at this time, so we'll go on to the Call to the Public. I do have one person who wishes to address the board at the Call to the Public. That would be Sherri Meriwether. Ms. Meriwether, if you'd like to approach the podium and tell us what's on your mind. Good morning.
Hi there. I live out on, off of Cali Lucero, which is 15 miles north on Stockton Hill Road, and I believe that Gary is our supervisor out there. We have a real problem with the maintenance of our road. We have over 70 homes that are accessed off of Cali Lucero. 20 of them are custom homes, and our road, if we're lucky, is bladed twice a year. The last six-month blading we got took the operator less than an hour to do two miles of road, and that was it. He skipped it. And when I called in to ask about that, they said, "Well, we don't have enough operators. We can't handle the requests out there." We have a problem in that we read in the paper where two miles, I think it's closer to two and a half, three miles of road to a winery are trying to be paved. Of course, it got turned down. Paved? I mean, how much money does it cost to have a road that accesses 70, over 70 homes, bladed at least every three months, let alone every six months? And then I get the, what I am told also, is that the road doesn't meet the engineering specs. Well, that's untrue as well, because we, that doesn't apply to us, because our road is bordered on one side or the other by state or BLM or state land, which negates the engineering requirement for the road. Our road is as wide as your podium is. It's not a narrow road by any means. The washboard on it is horrendous, and try to pull a living quarters trailer, or try to pull, or try to drive a nice RV over this road. It totally ruins it within a matter of trips. I don't know what else I have to do except show up here every time you have a meeting, and I guess the squeaky wheel is what it's going to take. I know a lot of people have come in with the same problem on this road, and I'm told by the neighbors, "Oh, nothing will be done. You won't get anybody to do anything." But I'm telling you, I am very tenacious, and I will be back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and I'm sure that someone will be getting back with you. That's the conclusion of those who wish to speak. Is there anyone else that didn't fill out a form that would like to speak on any non-agenized item? Yes, sir.
I turned in a form.
That'll be coming up later when we address the item. Thank you very much. All righty, moving on to our presentation this morning, Mr. Jam Shamell. He's a commissioner from Idaho County, Idaho, and he'll be speaking about the litigation strategy and reduced access to public lands. So, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. You know, I get to speak a lot, and I hope every time I walk up to a podium like this, especially in front of my peers, the butterflies never go away. If they do, I think it's time to stop. And Supervisor Angus, that was very well done. I mean, I'm just going to build on what you were talking about there, and I hope this is informative for all the supervisors this morning, the administrator, the attorney, the board, and all the audience members. I've worked on this issue diligently for about probably 15 years now, and I've never given up, because I just believe we win. As a county commissioner, when I walk into my county office, I ask myself a couple of questions every day. Those questions resolve around pretty much three questions. What does it mean to govern? What does it mean to be governed? And how's the best way to live? And are we providing for those opportunities for the people we govern? You see, our quality of life suffers today, not because of those around us and what they're doing to us, but the lack of us to turn around and battle back and believe we have the ability to make a difference, to be that difference that makes a difference. I got a little story. It's a great little anecdote. I'd like to start this off with, and maybe it helps make the point very, very well. It was once a native There was once a Native Indian boy, and amongst his tribe, they had a rite of initiation when they were around 16 years old. The men of the tribe would take the young man out to the wilderness, and for 30 days they had to take care of themselves. For 30 days, they had to fend for themselves, find shelter, find water, find food. And for this young Native American boy, things went well for the first nine to 10 days. Around the 11th and the 12th day, things were getting tough. On the morning of the 13th day, he woke up famished, unable to find food, shelter was getting scarce, and he looked off into the distance, and he saw a mountain. And he thought to himself, "Maybe if I climb that mountain, I can find some shelter, I can find better water, and I can find some food." So he set off in the morning for that mountain. About noon, he reached it. Wandering around the mountain, he stumbled upon a trail, and he began to head up the mountain. By about 5:00 in the afternoon, he reached near the top of the mountain, and as he's walking on the trail, a rattlesnake came out in front of him, and the young boy jumped back. The boy looked at the snake, and the snake looked at the boy. Then the boy looked back at the snake again, and the snake looked up at him and said, "Boy, I'm lost up here in the mountains, and I know you know the way down. Will you help me?" And the boy looked at him and said, "No, you're a rattlesnake. At any time, you could reach out, you could strike me, you could bite me, you could hurt me, you could even kill me. No, I won't do that." The snake looked at him and said, "Boy, you look famished. Oh, I'm starved. I haven't eaten in days." Says, "Boy, if you take me down the mountain, I will lead you to a banquet of food and drink like you've never seen." The boy looked back at him and said, "No, you're a rattlesnake, and I know what you can do to me. At any time, you can strike out, you can bite me, you can hurt me, you could even kill me." Snake looked back at him and said, "Boy, if you lead me down the mountain, I promise you, I won't hurt you." Boy looked back at the snake, and he said, "You promise?" "I promise." So the boy took the snake back down to the mountain, and he led him to a feast, a banquet like he had never seen, and the boy ate, and the snake ate, and they drank, and the snake began to dance. Snake stopped, and they danced, they ate some more, and they drank some more, and the snake began to dance, and the boy began to dance with him, and then without any warning, the snake struck out, and he bit the boy. And the boy fell to the ground, and the snake flipped it over to him. And the boy looked at him, and he said, "You promised. You promised you wouldn't hurt me." Snake said, "You knew what I was when you picked me up." Question, how many times are we going to pick up the rattlesnake with the federal government and the environmental groups? Have you tried coordination? How's that working out? Have you tried cooperation? How's that working out? PILT, we got a name for it up in Idaho County. It's called PILTS in Lieu of Taxes, okay? Watching our ever-shrinking SRS funds, we're the number-one recipient in the Northwest on SRS funds. They drop every year, and we're supposed to fund our county? And they left? It's 50% of our road department. I sympathize with the complaints you get from here, okay? It's getting really, really tough. So how do we get out of this mess? American Lands Council is doing a great job. Ken Ivory has led the charge. Matter of fact, I just emailed you that little op-ed. I've came to his defense. I got eaten alive in the state of Idaho for supporting Mr. Ivory, and I'll keep getting eaten alive. I don't mind it one bit. He's done an awesome job. And we're working on some litigation strategies that I believe can move this sooner rather than quicker, because the environmental community has a business plan, guys, and it's a well-laid-out business plan. I like to liken it to this. They've constructed a baseball stadium. And then guess what they do? Guess what they do? They invite us into that baseball stadium to play baseball. And we have to use their balls, their bats, their gloves, their boundary lines, and their umpires. And then we buy the Coke and the popcorn, and we build the stadium through the Equal Access to Justice Act. Just doesn't seem like a fair fight, does it? And for 40 years, we've been trying to tear down that baseball stadium. I got news for you, guys. You can't tear the baseball stadium down. But you know what you can do? You can build your own baseball stadium, where we invite them in, and we use our balls and our bats and our gloves and our umpires and our boundary lines, okay? And we're at a distinct competitive disadvantage. That's why what we've done here with the Association of People I'm working with has developed a business plan, because a lot of times, we don't understand that politics is a business, okay? And without a plan to go execute a business model, how are you going to succeed? How are you going to build that baseball stadium? And how this came about, I was invited to a meeting of county commissioners in Idaho of how they were going to go sue the federal forest, and they wanted my input. And I said, "I'd be glad to come to your presentation, but I just want one opportunity to present you an idea." They did a wonderful presentation, they had wonderful legal strategy, and I told them, "You will win." No question about it. We've seen the case before. And what will happen is, you'll spend two years in court, they'll send the Forest Service back and make them play by the rules, okay, because they're all worried about being sued. You'll win maybe an extra 75 acres of cut on the forest, and two years after that process is over, you're going to be sitting back in this room wondering what happened to you, and you're going to spend $150,000 because you don't have a plan. I want to offer you a different alternative. Like I said, I want to build our own baseball stadium. I said, "I believe we can put together a coalition of counties, where each county will commit $3,000 to $5,000." And I want to put 100 counties together, not just in Idaho, across the West and move into the East, and start with that seed money of $500,000, and put together a legal strategy that's based on the issue of fairness, Supervisor Angus, because that's what this is about. It's not fair. And under Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution, we are guaranteed a republic form of government. How can you have a republic form of government when the federal government owns, in my case, 67% of your state? In Utah, it's 75. In Nevada, it's 87. In Arizona, it's about 65 or 70%, isn't it? 70%. You can't adequately compete, and it's not fair to the eastern states who continually fund us with their dollars. And sadly to say, it's not even their dollars anymore. It's our kids' dollars and our grandkids' dollars and those dollars into the future. So I believe we can put this strategy together. The wonderful thing about this strategy is it's backed by precedent law. Every time the issue of fairness is brought before the court, they decide on the party that agrees with the party that does not have access, that same equal access to political power, and that's what we're being denied, okay? And in order to force Congress to sell these lands off, which I don't want them to do, but to transfer these lands off, okay? They were sold in the past. We've got a great tradition in the West now of access to these lands. I don't want to see that happen. People lose the things they've had. Plus, there's stockwater rights on these lands, there's grazing rights on these lands, you have property rights on these lands. You can't take those away. Those are long and held for, back to the early, I mean, the late 1800s and early 1900s. But we need to move this, we need to move this forward. And so that's what I'm here today, is to encourage you guys to, I'm looking for a support letter from Mojave County, to back what we're trying to do with the Coalition of Counties, which I am not associated with in any way. I do not sit on that board. I am not, we've put together a 501(c)(3). I am not an executive director on that board. I've had people who have privately funded me to get on the road and do what I'm doing here in speaking, and I'm hoping one day I don't have to do this anymore. We can just turn it over to the Coalition of Counties and actually maybe just move it into NACO and get that organization to steer it back on the right track about making things fair in this state. So what we have here is a business plan. If you guys, I believe Supervisor Watson, did you give copies to these folks, because I have copies, if anybody wants it in the room, I will leave them here with you, because I believe we, guys, we win. I just know we win. We win because of what your motto says up there. Deitad Deus, God and riches. I noticed that the minute I walked in the room. I was very impressed with that. I was very impressed you guys started with a prayer, too. So it seems like you guys read the same book. I know that we win, okay? So I want you to take a good, hard look at this business plan we've developed. The same legal team that just got awarded the RFP in Utah is the same legal team I'm working with, okay? And as they've taken this thing around and shown it to some of the best constitutional attorneys in the country, they have looked at this, and they have said, "You know what? This is something that wins." And you mentioned Shelby versus Holder. The case that we're talking about here is based, part of that is based out of the Shelby versus Holder case. And in my conversation with these attorneys, remember, these are some of the best, and I'm not an attorney. I bought up a little piece of dicta out of the Affordable Care Act, which they hadn't seen. But they did say, "Jim, it's interesting, the Medicaid side of the Affordable Care Act actually makes the case we're making here. We're probably going to use some of the briefings out of that, too." I said, "But did you see that piece of dicta that was in it?" They said, "What's that?" When Justice Roberts said this, "The states are separate and independent sovereigns. Sometimes they have to act like it." When Ron Rotunda heard that, if you don't know who that name is, just go Google it, he looked at George and he said, "You know what? They're daring us. They're daring us to bring the right case to them." And here's the other beauty part about this case. I believe we can get the counties organized, and I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, by no later in November, December. This is a case, we don't have to file here in the West. We take it straight with a class action, okay, suit with as many counties and municipalities as we can, directly to the Federal Claims Court using the Tucker Act. You see, we don't have to wait around. We can take action on this. The key thing is just to be consistent and persistent and resilient in everything that we do. I'm going to leave you guys with one thought on this, because Abraham Lincoln is just one of my heroes. And if there was ever an example of somebody being consistent, persistent, and resilient, it was Abraham Lincoln. Everybody thinks Lincoln was born to be president. Not so. Abraham Lincoln was born to abject poverty, but he never quit. He faced defeat throughout his life. He lost elections eight times, twice failed in business and suffered a nervous breakdown, all before being elected President of the United States. Lincoln was a champion, and he never gave up. In 1816, his family was forced out of its home, and he had to go to work to help support them. In 1818, his mother died. In 1831, he failed in business. In 1832, he ran for the state legislature, and he lost. In 1833, he borrowed some money from a friend. That same year, that business failed. He spent the next 17 years of his life paying that debt off. In 1834, he ran for the state legislature, and this time he won. But in 1835, he was engaged to be married, and his sweetheart died. Abraham Lincoln was heartbroken, he had a complete nervous breakdown, and spent the next six months completely confined to his bed. In 1838, he sought to be Speaker of the State Legislature, and he was defeated. In 1840, he sought to be an elector from the state legislature, and he was defeated. And in 1843, he ran for Congress, and he lost again. In 1846, he ran for Congress again, and this time he won, and he went back to Washington, DC, and he did a marvelous job. But in 1848, he ran for Congress again, and he lost. In 1848, 49, he sought to be the land officer of his home state. Now, Abraham Lincoln was also a well-accomplished surveyor and a lawyer at this time. His application for that position was denied. In 1854, he ran for the United States Senate and lost. And in 1856, he sought his party's vice presidential nomination. At his party's convention, he got less than 100 votes. In 1858, he ran for the United States Senate again, and he lost. And in 1860, Abraham Lincoln ran for President of the United States, and I just have to ask one question. Based on what? I'm sure when he lost that election in 1858, he said, "It's no big deal. I'm going to be president in two years." Consistency, persistency, and resiliency. When Lincoln was asked about it, he had this to say. He said, "The path was worn and slippery. My one foot slipped, kicking my other out of the way, but I said to myself, 'It's a slip, not a fall.'" My friends, we keep putting the problem outside of us when the problem is really right here in what we can do. And we believe in ourselves. We'll motivate those around us. For 15 years, I have done this. Ken Ivory has championed this marvelously. This is a plan of action. I encourage you as a board to please give me a support letter, because if we can put this together, I know that we win. Thank you for your time. Thank you. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmelk.
Schmelik.
How do you pronounce it?
Schmelik. Imagine there's an S on the front. Don't worry about it, though. I say it wrong some days.
All right, Mr. Schmelik. I'd like to know if anybody has any questions.
I have some questions.
Good.
Obviously. Thank you. Excellent, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And a perfect day, because we have so much to talk about, about public lands. And we're going to be talking, we have been given a report by our OMB. We've asked them to do a report about what a transfer would mean to us financially. Of course, it's not exact, it's an estimation and all that, and they gave us a wonderful report. And in that report, they talk about the Enabling Acts. And the Enabling Acts were the acts that made us states, and every state has one. And you'll be hearing a lot of this about the R-Enabling Acts as we go forward with this discussion in the papers. And I found it interesting what, you know, right front and center, our own OMB put in the State Enabling Act of 1910, which allowed the territory of Arizona to prepare for statehood, including the following statement, quote, "That the people inhabiting said proposed state do agree and declare that they forever disclaim all right entitled to the unappropriated and ungranted public lands lying within the boundaries." And, you know, you read that, and it sounds kind of clear, and I love what Representative Ivory says. He says, "We're to believe that people went across in covered wagons, risking their lives and their families, not knowing what was in front of them, so they can settle on land and then give it up forever," right? So I have the Enabling Acts here, and the Enabling Acts, actually, most of the states' Enabling Acts have the same wording. Arizona was from June 16, 1906. In 1906, 76.7% was federally controlled. In 1896, 42.3% is federally controlled today. In Oklahoma, which had the same exact date as our Enabling Act, same exact wording, it says in Oklahoma is that they're going to disclaim all this land, today, 1.6% is federally controlled. So that's what we're trying to say. Why the difference? So if you would, because you're so well-versed in this, if you can explain what that, what those words really meant in terms of being held in trust, so people will understand, we'll get rid of that argument right away.
Can I ask you a quick question? Was that, did the OMB office stop right there with the quote?
Yes.
Yeah, that's interesting. Isn't it wonderful how they don't put the whole thing in there? I actually have Idaho's right in front of me here, and the people of the state of Idaho do agree and declare that "We forever disclaim all right entitled to the unappropriate public lands lying within the boundaries thereof, and to all lands lying within the limits owned and held by any Indians or Indian tribes." And then there's a little thing called a semicolon, and they seem to stop right there. "And until the title thereto shall have been extinguished by the United States." Now, "shall" is a very specific word, and so is extinguish. And I did a rebuttal on this, and I got Black's Law Dictionary, I wish I had time to pull it up here, but I've used Black's Law's dictionary of what the word "shall" means. It doesn't mean maybe, it doesn't mean kind of will do it. It means you shall dispose of the land. And extinguish, to get rid of, not to own anymore. These are out of Black's Law's dictionaries. Our founding fathers, okay, were very specific in the language they used. Those creating our states. It's too bad we don't teach proper English anymore, and diagramming of sentences in a high school, okay? These are things we need to understand. Language was very specific when they wrote these things. Another interesting thing about this, it's very specific to the land they will hold, and they will continue to hold, all the land in trust for the tribes. Now, if there's no intent to dispose of the land based on the rest of this, then why do they differentiate what land they're going to be specifically holding on to? And if South Dakota and North Dakota have the exact same enabling language, and so does Oklahoma, and so does a lot of other states, why the difference? Why, it's a ruse. Here's a challenge, though. There's a challenge with what they call the contract theory here. You see, this has ever been brought to court, so there's no precedent law behind it. This is the challenge. The case we're talking about has precedent law behind it, and it would use part of this, and then you force Congress politically to take the action they have to take, which is dispose of the land. The scary thing here is a lot of people aren't aware of, and we are aware of this, American Lands Council is very aware of it. The federal government, based on this language, can sell this land whenever they want to, to the highest bidder. And I'm not doing that as a scare tactic. I've studied this extensively. I've spoken with some of the best attorneys in the country. We don't want that to happen. And think about this. With that land, not only do they control the states in the West, but have you guys ever thought about this? Not only is this some of the most valuable land in the United States, it's the most valuable land in the world, in the world. And they control us all with it. And if you think legislatively you can fix this in Washington, DC, good luck. The baseball stadium is set up there, guys, and they're doing a darn good job of it. And if you think you can fix it in state capitals, other than Utah, I've watched the carpet bombing of the environmental community inside the state capitals. They're very effective, because they're set up there. They don't have to be set up in a lot of them. And they're a $7 billion a year industry when you figure into the GDP. However, if you put together over 100 counties, I know we can get 200. I'm getting support for this as I go across the West. How do you target 100 counties? How do you target 200? Not though of the municipalities and school districts on top of that, and road districts. I don't know if you have road districts here. We have 14 of them in Idaho County. How do you politically target that and go out and spread your, you can't. It's impossible. That's part of the business plan inside this political strategy. You see, we've got to start thinking the way they do, and start thinking outside the box. So yeah, those enabling, this enabling language, it's a ruse. It's a complete ruse. The challenge is it's never been bought to court. What the states were able to do to get Congress to do its duty was petition them, and petition them heavily. Okay? Today, it's too broke in Washington, DC to do that, guys. But if you want to bring political power against them, organize the counties. I am so convinced so much power lies inside who we are as the people, because we're the closest to the people. And then bring it back under local management. Because if you just bring it back into the state and have the state capital, all you're going to do is move the cronyism from Washington, DC to your state capital. Try cronyism at the local level. We are watched like hawks. You try to pull a fast one, boy, you'll be out of office so fast it'll make your head sick. As a matter of fact, the only position I think is worse than a county supervisor or a county commissioner is being on the school board. Okay? It's a tough job. You guys know it. We hear everything. You ever hear somebody complain about a road to a state legislature? I don't think so. So, does that help? Any other questions?
Supervisor Johnson.
I guess the only question I have, more of a statement, is I'm in support of the federal government giving the land back, but I believe it should come back to the counties, not the state. I believe our state is the same as the federal government, and they will screw the entire deal up.
Agreed.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Watson, do you have anything?
I'd just like to make a recommendation that we move this item to the front of the agenda, so we can make a decision on it.
I agree. Supervisor Moss, do you have anything?
No. A trip to say thank you to the Speaker. He did a marvelous job, and I agree with Supervisor Watson to stop bringing this up on the agenda.
If I could just say one thing. I'm not looking for a support letter right now. I am looking for a commitment to the dollars. As soon as we get, as soon as we get about 50 counties on board, I will be asking for the money. So I'm asking you, if you do do this, to consider, you're going to have to budget for it, because we will ask for it. The other thing I believe we can do in talking to the people we've been working with, these guys have great contacts inside the industries of Caterpillar, John Deere, Ford, Peterbilt, Pack Car, White Trucking, I can go on down the line, Steel Chainsaw, Husqvarna, Polaris, Arctic Snowcat, Can-Am. These peoples, these people would benefit greatly with access to these lands and back to the things we can do on those lands. We're very well convinced we can take the $500,000 with the business plan and go in and probably raise another $30 to $40 million to get the foundation of this baseball stadium built. I've also heard a little rumor the Koch Brothers are seriously watching this. I believe if they see counties band together and take action like this, you can get an organization like the Koch Brothers to step in and add another $40 million, which is like spending 40 for them the way you and I would spend 40 bucks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody who would like copies of these, I'll be glad to hand them out.
Actually, if you can leave a few with the clerk of the board, she'll get them to us. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation, and thank you for coming to Mojave County. Based on the recommendation of Supervisor Watson, I'm going to go out of order and move item number 46 to the front of agenda. This item is a discussion of possible action regarding authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute a letter of support in the development of federal legislation for the transfer of public lands to the western states and direct staff to budget $5,000 in the General Administration Legal Services line item for year 2016 to support these efforts.
Motion to discuss, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Angus.
Okay. I am all for all of this, and for the letter and maybe even to budget. But right now, you know, this, we give money to, I know this is going, people are going to ask about, because we already give money to the American Lands Council. And I know that you, Commissioner, work very closely with them, and I know that there's going to be a conference call. And I would just love to see you all working together, between you and Ken Ivory. I mean, they don't, they won't know what's going to hit them. So that is just, I just want to be a little sober. You know, we're going through budgets. We're, you know, watching every dime. So I want to make sure that the money that we do allocate is going exactly to the, you know, the one that's going to expedite the quickest and most, can assure us the most success. So with that, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus, for that comment. And with that comment, what I would like to do is make a motion to authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute a letter of intent for the development of federal legislation through this act, and provide for, in the budget, $5,000 in the General Administration Legal Services line item, and to support these efforts.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Watson. Is there any other discussion before we?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
The question I would have Supervisor Watson is, this is something we'll discuss, the same thing with American Lands Council at budget time. So we're not, today, we're not giving $5,000. It'll just be in the budget for us to decide.
Letter of intent and in the budget. That's all I had.
Okay, Supervisor Moss, do you have anything?
No. I am very much in support of the motion.
All righty, we have a motion and a second. And I just wanted to state that I believe that we should have a united front with the American Lands Association and with the Idaho Commissioner. And I'm in support of the motion as well. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Rick.
If I could for just a moment?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
Mr. Schmelick, thank you very much for coming down, making that long trip today. And I know you have to go back to Cedar City today. But I'd like to say thank you very much for bringing this to Mojave County. And I'm sure that there'll be other counties within our state that will be happy to join you. And with that, thank you very much.
I will get on the road, because I do have to get to Cedar City. Thank you. But then Phoenix, so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. Okay, we'll move back to the consent agenda. The following items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member or so requests. Are there any board members that would like to have an item removed? Supervisor Angus.
Well, only 34, because I believe there's someone from my district signed up to talk about it.
Okay, Supervisor Watson?
None. 28-30.
What was that?
28 and 30.
Supervisor Moss?
None.
And I would like number 11 polled.
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'd move to approve the consent minus 11, 28, 30, and 34, I believe.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
All right, moving on to item number 11. Oh, we didn't vote. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we can move on to item 11. I asked to have this item polled myself, and it is to approve an intergovernment agreement with the Bureau of Land Management for the BLM to provide wild land fire prevention and suppression services in Mojave County's Walupi Mountain Park, including Camp Levy Levy for a 14-month trial period at no cost to the county. The agreement will mitigate the possibilities of the county occurring substantial expeditions for large wildfire suppression activities and litigation costs related to currently not having a dedicated fire suppression agency covering the Walupi Mountain Park should a fire originating in the park cause personal injury or property loss on adjacent lands. This is under Developmental Services. And I just wanted to say that we're very fortunate that we've not had any large forest fires, other than the Dean Peak Fire. But actually, Friday night, we had a small fire in the Walupi side of the mountains near or to Wikiapp. So we've been very fortunate. But the increased fire danger each year with the added growth, it causes concerns, and the ongoing drought conditions leave our mountain very vulnerable. So I just wanted to have Developmental Services explain this a little bit further, of how this is going to work and why we didn't have this in place before. I'm surprised that it was left unprotected, and maybe I misunderstood what this means.
Now, Supervisor Bishop, I think you understand it correctly. There hasn't been an agreement in place since, before I've been here, in terms of fire suppression on the park itself. The park is not in any fire district. It's not in the Pine Lake Fire District. Oh, the Pine Lake is right there. What's happened in the past is the BLM has voluntarily, and by verbal agreement, they have responded to fires up on the park and in the Camp Levy Levy area. They've sent their crews up there to put out ignitions from lightning strikes and that type of thing. But that's just been strictly a verbal handshake agreement, and what we want to do is formalize that. They've done an excellent job on doing that. As a matter of fact, as you mentioned, this weekend, the fire they responded to down at Wikiapp, they also responded to a lightning strike in Wheeler Wash, just right next to Pine Lake, Sunday morning. And we're up there in 20 minutes and put the fire out. So, at the request of Pine Lake Fire Department. So what we want to do here is we actually want to formalize the agreement so that it's made clear that the park is a priority for BLM fire. By having this agreement, we will be a priority for them. They have agreed that they're going to do, when the fire danger is extremely high, they'll be doing some patrols up there, as well as helping on prevention. And they will be deploying up there to any additional lightning strikes or any other types of ignitions, and it'll be as part of a formal agreement. This will make it much more likely that if we have a major fire up there and incur extreme costs, which could run, as you're aware, could run into 100,000s of dollars or even millions of dollars, that that funding can be covered out of BLM funds. So this is essentially what we're doing. We want to formalize this, instead of just leaving it where it has been in the past, where it's just been kind of an understood that they would respond up there. We talked about making this, the first year, whether we wanted to make it an agreement where they would, there would be some exchange of funds. But since we formalized the agreement after the budget process took place, actually, the BLM suggested, well, that's just the first year. Let's just do it on a trial basis, and that would allow them to also do some research, I guess, on prior history, and also see what it costs them this year to do patrols and to do response. And that way, they'll have a better handle on their exact cost for responding up there. And then, when this agreement expires in 14 months, we'll be looking at actually putting in place another agreement, which would include some monetary exchange on an annual basis. So that's essentially where we're at.
Okay, well, it sounds like a very generous offer that BLM is giving us, and I don't see how we can turn it down, since they're doing it for free. And it will be interesting to see what the costs are when they bring it back. Supervisor Johnson, I can see you have.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Not more of a question, but a lot of people have concerns about how we always are picking on the Boy Scouts up there at Camp Levy Levy. But if you can explain about the one road in and one road out, and how that, you know, you spent a lot of time up there. I believe you just put a new tower up in there to improve emergency broadcasting through there, too?
Well, yeah, we've done a number of things, Supervisor Johnson, up there. And a lot of that was as a result, we were actually doing things up there prior to the Dean Peak Fire, to reduce the threat up in the park itself and up at Camp Levy Levy. We've been working with the Boy Scouts for a number of years to get a plan in place for them up there to deal with any type of fire evacuation situation. But after the Dean Peak Fire, we ramped it up substantially, and we appreciate the fact that the board allocated $50,000 to essentially give to emergency management to do work up there. We were able to use that funding, and also some funding that Pine Lake Fire Department received from State Forestry in a grant for fuel modification. We were actually a partner in that grant, so we were able to use some of that money to do a lot of fuel modification work and put in fuel breaks in the park itself and also up at Camp Levy Levy. We've done quite a bit of fuel modification work up there. We've improved the communication up there in terms of, there's now a means of reaching the Boy Scouts up there by phone and by radio. We check that every year. When groups are up there, we work with the groups to be sure that they're manning those systems and the technology is working. We're looking at a number of other things to do in future, as well as additional fuel modification work, possibly putting in some type of siren up there to make it easier for them to reach the Boy Scouts and also hikers that are coming up from the park itself in that area. They do have a siren now up there, but we were looking at one that might be a little more efficient and a little louder. But as you mentioned, the main concern up there, from emergency management and a first response standpoint, is the one road in. And it's not a very good road at times. It's maintained by the Users Group for the Hayden Peak Communication Sites. And they do a pretty good job of maintaining it, but it's still a rough road. And one road in, really no back way out. So our biggest concern is, up there is, every year, is monitoring the threat based on the fire conditions and being sure that we're in a position to where we can, we could warn the Boy Scouts, we can get them out of there if there's a potential threat to them from a fire ignition. And unfortunately, the timing of it is when they're up there is in, usually, they were, the main Boy Scout camp just finished up on Saturday. They were up there for a week. And that's usually the time when things really start getting hazardous up there. This year, we were lucky. It wasn't nearly that bad because of some of the earlier rainfall we had, and so we haven't really gone into fire restrictions yet, so. But that is certainly one of our highest priority concerns in emergency management, to be able to deal with that situation up there.
Thank you. That's all. People understood. Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Byron? Supervisor Moss?
None.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 11.
Second motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number 28. Supervisor Johnson asked this to be polled.
Motion for discussion? Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second for discussion. This will be authorized the Public Works Director to sign a letter of concurrence permitting the Walupi Tribe to include 42.17 total miles of county owned and maintained, sections of Antares Road, Pierce Ferry Road, and Upper Trout Creek Road, Lower Trout Creek Road, and the Bogals Ranch Road into the Indian Reservations Road inventory.
Madam Chair, I just have a question of Mr. Lutowski. This in no way benefits Mojave County.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. The National Tribal Transportation Facility Inventory is a federal inventory of tribal roads that don't necessarily intersect, in all instances, tribal lands within the political jurisdiction. But instead, tribes have the opportunity, and the other, this inventory also is known as the Indian Reservation Roads Inventory, but tribes have an opportunity to enlist on this federal inventory roads outside the political jurisdictions of tribal reservations, those roads that provide access to tribal reservations for economic purposes. And what happens with the Walupi Tribe in this request is, by including certain county roads, which would not change the ownership, jurisdiction, or maintenance of those roads, it would enable, in this instance, the Walupi Tribe to apply for federal funds for improvement of such roads as the ones that are being presented here for consideration. And again, even if the tribe were to successfully apply and obtain such funding for improvements the tribe were to successfully apply and obtain such funding for improvements of county roadways, it would in no instance affect their ownership, operation, or maintenance responsibility that the county maintains.
Okay. Just to ballpark, if county budgets, and we tell you to pave a road, you know, it's in your, this year planned, do you get the road paved in that year? Just generally? I mean, you're done in the budget year?
Correct. Correct. We target that budget year.
And up in the northern part of the county where we've had one of these agreements with the tribe up there, how many years has that road been going on now? This hasn't been finished?
Members of the Board Supervisor Johnson, we do have, we have done this similarly for the Kaibad Paiute Tribe as well as the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe. But you may be referring to Diamond Bar Road?
Right.
That the Wallopai Tribe did undertake more as an economic improvement related to the Grand Canyon West development. We, the Board did have an agreement with the tribe, and that has currently, their Phase Two has not been closed out. So, it has not been closed out for me.
How many years has that been?
Since approximately, there was a long design process that has been ongoing since the 2007 timeframe.
Okay. I'm obviously opposed to this. When you talk about economic benefit, I believe the biggest driver we had up there was the Cowboy Ranch. I don't know what it's called up there. And basically, he's been put out of business. I do not support having Arrots taken into the Indian Nation. I believe it hurts the county more than it helps. That was all I had. That's the reason I pulled it off.
Supervisor Angus.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Um, yes. Go ahead Supervisor Moss.
I think this actually may be a very good thing for two reasons. First, we have the possibility that if it's taken, if it remains a county road, it is our road, but the tribe would have the ability to apply for funding to maintain that road that we would not be able to. So, we could, over the short or medium term, actually save some money, if I'm understanding Mr. Lutowski correctly. Secondly, I mean, with the Planet Ranch and other situations, we seem to be in indirect conflict with the Wallopai Nation from time to time. And this would be an opportunity for us, at really no cost to ourselves, to show them that we want to be good neighbors. So, I see two benefits to this to Mojave County, both of them, you know, more or less indirect, but there's really no downside from a legal basis.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Angus has a comment.
Thank you. How about the emergency services here on these roads? Is it the same? Because we take care. We had that issue with Lake Mojave Ranches. So, that's not going to change any of it. They will be able to get money, but we're still going to be servicing them.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus says correct. There is no impact on emergency services.
But ultimately, who's responsible? So, if they, let's say they get the money and they did pave it, and there's some lawsuits involved, who's ultimately liable?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, the county retains a liability for the ongoing operation maintenance of these roads. The five roads being considered include a paved road, Pierce Ferry Road, as well as an unsurfaced road.
So, if they get money for these roads, they're going to hand it over to us?
Good question. Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, we've only seen this play out in the context of Diamond Bar Road, where the tribe has, through the Bureau of Indian Affairs, has taken responsibility for carrying out the project, more or less under a permit type of a relationship with the county. These types of projects, whether they be private or public projects, we see a fantastic project on the horizon. For example, the Walmart Supercenter in Fort Mojave. There's an example of a private developer, you know, paying for improvements to county roads and state highways. This is another mechanism by which, if the roads were not listed on the Indian Reservation Roads Inventory, the tribe could not apply for federal funds through what's labeled the Tribal Transportation Program. It's a program that the county simply can't apply for.
Okay. It's not a really great analogy, because Walmart's a private company. That's private money. No matter how you look at it, we're still paying for it. It's BIA, it's still federal money. You know, it's still coming out of our pockets.
Correct. Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, what I meant to state was more the mechanism by which the improvement project would be carried out. It's a project carried out by the entity desiring to improve the road.
And they're, okay. I just worry about the guarantees. They get this money, you know, we lot this, just ends up where it's supposed to be.
Madam Chair, I think I might be able to explain a little bit of it. What it does, it takes away our overseeing of the road. Like Diamond Bar, we don't see anything because the tribes are doing it, and the feds are doing it, the BIA is doing it, and we can't say anything. We have the final say. We have a punch list that the county's going over. But when people are coming to us, like the business that was up there, we can't help them. Now, if somebody comes to us on a road that we've given to Mr. Lutowski to build, and something's going wrong with the contractor, we can, you know, as a board, say, hey, you need to straighten out your act or do something. But, I mean, this gentleman, which was the largest employer up there, is basically almost out of business, you know, because we had no input into it. And while it is federal money, they can do it, it takes it out of our hands. We eventually get it back, but during that construction period, so the only people that would be hurt, seeing as how it's not on the tribal land, would be our residents. That's the only reason I brought it up.
County Administrator Hendricks, did you have something?
Madam Chairman, in just a brief discussion with our county attorney, we've got Lower Trout Creek, Upper Trout Creek, and Bogles Ranch Road that's on the list. I'm not sure that those roads directly lead to any reservation. One of the things that I'd like to try to ensure is that the allowing of these roads to be on the Wallopai listing would in no way adversely impact our opposition to the severance and transfer of the waters in the sandy. Thank you.
Thank you. That's interesting. And Director Lutowski, can you address that? Have you taken that into consideration?
Madam Chair, Public Works has not taken the issues surrounding the big sandy water rights into consideration, these evaluations. I do understand that the Wallopai Tribe has presented these certain roads as they relate to certain tribal interests throughout Mojave County.
Do you want to table this until we find out that information?
No, I'd vote against it, but that's the best I can get. That's what I'll do. I guess the only other question I would have, Mr. Lutowski, was going back to Diamond Bar, it's been going on for an awful long time. Do you recall who was the Public Works Director when this started? That's all right. Madam Chairman, if I could, I'd like to ask some further clarification also on the Trout Creek, Bogles, and the Upper Trout Creek roads. That's why they're included into this. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to table this item for one meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table it. I believe Mr. Hendricks wanted to make a comment. Did you still want to make a comment?
No, I appreciate the Board tabling, so that we can find out the information. I just wanted to ensure that there was no implied, this would not provide any implied support for the severance and transfer. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
Did you have a timeframe to table that, too?
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting. Okay. We have a motion to table till the next meeting. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number 30. This was polled by Supervisor Johnson. The item is, approve the 2015 lease agreement between Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and Mojave County Attorney's Office for office space in the Lake Havasu City Police Department, located at 2360 McCollack Boulevard North, Las Vegas, or not Las Vegas, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, for the annual rent amount of $4,158 paid in quarterly installments for the term July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020, on behalf of the Mojave County Attorney's Office.
Motion for discussion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Go ahead Supervisor Johnson.
Madam Chair, I guess the question I would have of the county manager would be, this contract has been going on for well over 10 years. We can find, or I can find, no record of why it's needed. There was no backup saying why our county attorney needed to be housed in a Lake Havasu Police Department. We've just done a million-dollar remodel of our court system. Can you explain why they can't move into our building and save us the $4,000?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, aye. I personally didn't investigate why an elected official believes it's necessary. What the backup information does say is that the county attorney's office has a direct relationship and a necessary relationship with the city's police department. And in the backup information, it talks about them needing direct access. I believe if you do the math, the office space that's being contemplated is between 300 and 400 square foot. So, from a county administrator position, if elected official comes to me and believes something is necessary for their operation of their department, I try to accommodate them as best as I possibly can.
I guess, Madam Chair, my question is, maybe I can continue this till we can get better backup. But the county attorney's office kind of says everything. It says county attorney. We should be working with, I mean, they work with the city, but we have done the remodels and everything to see if there's space available in the county building to house our own people. So, with that, I'd make a motion to continue this till the next meeting, till we can get an explanation from the county attorney.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to item 34, ratify the appointment and recommend approval of the salary of Mojave County Sheriff Chief Deputy Rodney Head at Range 30 Step 7, $112,944 annually, effective July 1st, 2015. This was polled by Supervisor Angus, and you have the floor.
Oh, I just polled it because there was someone from my district signed up to speak.
All right. We have a request to speak from Barbara Pape.
Pape.
Pape. Barbara Pape. If you want to come down to the podium and tell us what's on your mind.
My address and everything?
Yes, please.
Barbara Pape, 3908 Jamboi Way in Bullhead City. I'm here to say that Rodney Head is the best person to pick, okay? I've seen him work. I've seen his professionalism. I've seen his organization. He's, he worked, he is willing to be with the people, and any time we needed help, we were always, he was always there to hear us. I think he's the best for a county to be safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 38. Discussion and possible action reference revisions to the anti-littering ordinance number 2002-03 for the purpose of removing the five-day discretionary or notice period. I did receive a written comment from Lance Buckhammer. I won't read the entire letter to you, but he wanted some information provided to him, and I think the information was not provided for legal reasons. And it's my understanding that that information was relayed to him. So, with that in mind...
Motion for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion for discussion, seconded Supervisor Watson. Go ahead.
Thank you. I believe this has come back to us now for the fifth time. And in my recent discussions with County Attorney Jace Zach, he has again expressed the need to keep the five-day discretionary notice period, that it's a very integral part of the ability for our people at E-RACE to do their job. While at the same time, we can get whatever proceedings we need to get against those criminals that are littering our landscape. I believe that everyone received a notice of such an occurrence the other day where there was indictment on that. So, I would like to, at this point, solve this problem by making a motion to keep the five-day discretionary notice period in the littering ordinance number 2002-03.
I'll second that.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Discussion Supervisor Johnson. You have the floor.
Thank you. The mission of E-RACE says, "Our mission is to prevent illegal wildcat dumping by enforcement, education, and pursuit of criminal offenders. We accomplish this mission by investigating the criminal complaints, educating the public, and with the assistance of many community volunteer groups, businesses, organizations throughout Mojave County." And E-RACE stands for Environmental Rural Area Cleanup Enforcement. Now, Mr. Lutowski can correct me if I'm wrong. I finally got the number of prosecutions that we had in the last year. It's zero. Zero people in Mojave County have been arrested and prosecuted. And the attorney's office wants to give them five days grace. The first list they gave us was from the secret police, because they're telling people they can't have a list of the people that we've had clean things up. I believe that we are not doing one thing to prevent illegal dumping. We have provided bulletproof vests, night vision, handguns, long rifles. I mean, and nobody has been arrested or prosecuted. I think that we need to keep this reward system going and stop illegal dumping. I'm not for removing the five-day grace period.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. And I just want to say that I don't disagree with Supervisor Johnson. I think the $500 reward, if we're going to have it, we need to have prosecutions. And I believe that E-RACE understands that now, and I think they will be doing more prosecutions. In fact, I was just informed that they have a case now that they are prosecuting. So, I would still like to be able to have the function of the five-day period where we can get some of this cleaned up if it's not prosecutable. So, that's what I have.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Moss, yes.
I agree with you. Not every criminal matter, and this is a criminal matter, requires arrest or prosecution. We need to have some flexibility in dealing with the problems. And this five-day period, so they can correct their wrong, seems from the county attorney's perspective, Jace Zach is no pushover, is very much a hard-nosed prosecutor. And I believe our sheriff's department is in that same mold. If they see this five-day waiting period so that the perpetrator of the illegal dumping can fix the problem as being beneficial to both the budget and for the effective cleanup of our desert, I have a hard time disagreeing with them, because these are the guys who know they're dealing with it daily. And if you look at the tonnage of waste removed in the desert, they're being very effective. So, rather than adopt a one-size-fits-all attitude, which is arrest, prosecuting, fix, maybe this five-day waiting period, which has been so successful, should be kept in place, because it's been working. So, it gives the county attorney, it gives the sheriff's department flexibility, and I don't think we should necessarily take that away from them.
I think, Madam Chair, for me, I think in response to Supervisor Moss, I disagree that, I agree that the tonnage is tremendous that the E-RACE officers are bringing in, but it's not lessening. So, obviously, what they're doing now isn't affecting the illegal dumpers. They're just going out and cleaning up after them. I mean, if we're going to give five-day grace, we should give it to every crime that's committed. That's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. And I'd like to add that maybe we could revisit this in a year and see that more prosecutions are being done and encourage that to happen. If the evidence there, if the evidence is there, I see no reason why they should not be prosecuted. So, I'd like to see this revisited in a year and just see what's happened, because right now, we've got one prosecution, and maybe we'll get more, and that will be the deterrent that Supervisor Johnson is hoping to see.
I don't believe we have any.
Does anybody else have any comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Opposed, aye.
Okay. We have a motion that carries with one opposed. All right. Going on to item number 39. Discussion and possible action reference except OMB's draft report on the options for the transfer of public lands and provide comments. Motion to discuss. Okay. We have a motion to discuss.
No second?
And a second. OMB, would you like to come forward and give your presentation?
Jean Hapler retired, but came back just because I was told that I have this report done before I retired, and it was delivered last week. Leslie and I worked on this report. It's in draft. We still have some cleaning up that the Development Services has actually got to take some of the maps and put it in a more published form for us, for the Board. And, you know, basically tried to answer the questions of... And, you know, basically tried to answer the questions of, you know, where the land is, what the tax, and again, if you look in the acknowledgement, the assessor's office helped us with the maps and the tax data, and the Development Services is helping us. They helped us move some of the, and put some of this together, and they're going to take it and put it into publish. And then Public Works also reviewed and helped us with this. And what's interesting when you put some things, and I think the presentation today by Jim from Idaho was, the commissioner, was very, very, very good. And it adds, there's a lot of information out there. There's a lot of different numbers out there, and that's one of the things that we cautious, caution. The fact is, is when you start looking at different sources, if you look at BLM or the federal or headwaters economics, no number matches up perfectly that says this is how much land's out there, this is how many parcels are out there, or how much, you know, the square miles. So that was one of the things we caution. So it's approximate numbers. And again, we also review the model that the assessor uses in putting together. It's an approximate number, a rough number on what the possibility of taxes. So again, it's a rough, it's something that we can work with. It's not saying that that's a firm number. And one of the things, there's two things that we want to look at in this as we go through this is other land. I think there's a, needs to be a discussion about other land and the fact that what we talk about, and I think that there was a question about how many acres Mojave County owned, and I, you know, I can kind of turn it over to the assessor that they've researched it and came up with an answer of like four thousand two hundred parcels or whatever, and that's one area we can get into a discussion. The other area is water, and we've been, if you look at the paper in Arizona Republic yesterday, there was an article about running out of water in some of the farmlands and stuff. Water is one key issue that we have to, is we look at land, we also need to look and keep water as an area that we need to go after. This report couldn't have been done without the assistance also of Leslie and my team. Leslie put a lot of hard work into this, and I lost some PTO time to the tune of about a hundred hours because I was planning on taking some time off, but I did complete this report. So Leslie, you have anything?
Thank you very much, and the summary is excellent, and I enjoyed reading it, but I also enjoyed stopping by your office and seeing how you used blue painter's tape to paint the pages of this manuscript all over the walls so that you could kind of organize and put it together. And it's refreshing to see that it did come together in a format that didn't need the tape. So thank you very much, and good luck and Godspeed with fixing it from draft form to the printed copy that we'll use over and over again with the transfer of public lands in the limelight right now that we're all really, really concerned about.
Well, one of the things that Development Services got to do, they have a person that edits, and they have a phase that they go through, and they can put it together, a cleaned-up copy like you have in front of you, or they can get into where they can, they have a manual that looks like this form, so, but it does take a lot of time to do that, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Supervisor Angus?
Okay, the discrepancy in the number of acres reported, you, I think you addressed that, and we all know it's impossible to get an exact number, and I understand that. Just as an aside, because just going through this, you put in Mojave County's mission statement, and I just want to read it for everyone, so it's in the record. I forgot. I think we talked about it the first year we were supervisors, but the mission statement for Mojave County, "The mission of Mojave County is to serve its citizens through the efficient management of resources and the promotion of cooperation among communities in a visionary manner that enhances the lives of those served." And I like that mission statement, and I hope we're successful in that. Okay. The next part of your report is the other lands, and I was interested in that. Is there, is there a way we can sort of get a list? I know, I know, I'd heard BLM had a list of parcels that they had to dispose of, but I really wasn't aware that we had that many. So, and how does it, you know, how did that happen, and how, how do we get a list and see what sort of the land use is, and what we can maybe possibly do with it? And as we talk about, you know, the federal government getting out of it and privatizing, getting it back into private hands, I know a lot of it's probably land that you can't use, but I'd like to at least see it.
Yeah, well, I'll let the assessor.
I think, Madam Chair, I might be able to answer the question for Supervisor Angus. When I first got in, I had them put together a book of all property that Mojave County owned, and we made a big deal out of it and said, hey, we have this land, and it's for sale, and there really wasn't any land that anybody wanted. Most of it comes from people who no longer want to pay their taxes, and they make a, they just ask the county to take it back, and they take it off. That's how we got it. And at some point, I think the only way we're going to be able to get rid of a lot of it is if we're able to make swaps with BLM or somebody else to get rid of it, because it's not desirable land, and they probably wouldn't have given it to us in the first place.
Can I get that book?
Should be every, well, I don't know now, because now that we have five, when we had three, we, everybody had a book with all the plats in it and everything, but.
Well, this has been, may I, Madam Chairman, members of the board?
Absolutely.
We've dealt with this issue, like Buster was saying, for years and years and years. Years ago, okay, first of all, there was a process that a prior attorney had stated that we had to go through if we were ever to address this issue. And what was, at that time, they were saying, well, you had to go out and spend three hundred dollars for an appraiser, a private fee appraiser, and then you had to order a title report, which would cost X number of dollars. And by the time you got done adding in all these costs, it didn't make sense to even pursue it because you had never reaped the money it cost you to even bother to get them out on the market on many of these properties. Is that the way you recall it to Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, it was that way, and even when we wanted to just go ahead because of the, doing the environmental assessment, sometimes we were asked on that if we're going to sell it, and that's expensive to do an environmental assessment.
The, I have a suggestion. I don't know if it would work. Mr. Extrem there would be the one we'd go to as the ultimate source of whether it'd work or not. And that would be okay. First of all, we dealt with it in this last issue with the Mineral Park Mine, where we had an attorney trying to get you to lower the, lower the taxes based on the value of the property. And the statute basically says that you can, the board has the right to lower the taxes to the value of the property, all right? So number one, I'd suggest that why not have the assessor go out and value these properties? We're registered appraisers. We'd value each one as a, as a individual fee simple appraiser would, and we would use then that number to lower, you would lower the taxes to that number, which make it more viable to sell them. And of course, you all know that the assessor is lenient regarding his values. So this would help move the property along. And so that might be one way to economically go about this. And then you got to realize that a lot of these properties would be, I get people coming in all the time that say, hey, look, we'd like to buy that little sliver that's next to us. It was an easement. It's now been abandoned. It was a separate parcel. It's out there. We want to buy it, but we don't want to pay five, ten, fifteen, twenty years' worth of taxes on it. And so if we could do that, these people would then pick up those little slivers, and they'd be put back into the tax base. I think Buster was kind of correct there in the sense that, you know, a lot of these properties are not desirable, otherwise they would have gone right away years ago. It's something to explore. As assessor, we can go out there, we'll value these if you so wish, and, but I would only suggest we do that much effort, put that much effort into it. If, say, Bill Extrem could sit here and say, hey, yeah, this is a viable way to go about it. Maybe there's a way we can get around not having to provide a title report at our expense. Maybe we could make that an expense of the purchaser and take it out of our, you know, coming out of our pocket. Anyway, those are kind of suggestions that I would, we might explore. Boy, no response.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for our assessor?
I'll send the assessor's.
You're free to go. Thank you very much. Supervisor Angus, you had a question?
I just have one request, because this is a draft. This is a draft report. When you go and finalize it for the record, I want you to take the whole enabling act and put it in, as we discussed earlier in the day, because it gives a false impression about what our rights are as a state.
And that's why we put it as a draft to get your input.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you very much.
May I make a comment, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Moss, yes.
Yeah, I really think that this is exactly as labeled. It's a draft report, and I think it's been recently delivered to the board, that we should take some time, and some moderate amount of time, not a short amount of time, to go through it. And I really, I read it, and I really enjoyed it, but we need now to take it to the various groups, whether it's secondary taxing districts, or whether it's community groups, or whether it's just our own thinking caps, to go through it, and then over the course of, let's say, the next sixty days, gather that information that we need in order to put this report into final. I want to also thank OMB and Mr. Hefler. I think they've done an outstanding job, and even though they're estimates, it's important to point out they're conservative estimates. That point is made within the report. So when we say this is how much property tax revenue that's being lost, or this much lost future economic growth and opportunity, we're at the low end. It's probably much higher than that, especially if some of these areas were developed.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Moss. So do I understand that was a form of a motion to bring it back in sixty days and accept it as in draft form for now?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. We'll bring that back in sixty days and see how you've done. Thank you very much. Next item, number forty. Discussion and possible action reference Mojave County personnel policies and procedures as presented at the May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. We have two people signed up to speak on this item. First person is Stacy Hadley. Ms. Hadley, if you'll approach the podium and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Stacy Hadley. I live twenty-two eighty-five Calle Elende in Kingman, A six four oh one. I've been a county employee for over eight years. I question the putting of the PTO policy. As an employee for so many years, why would you punish the ones that have been here so long and taking their PTO time away? Why would you reduce the amount of hours that we've worked so hard to keep, and some of us that have worked so hard to stay there? Why would it be taken away from us? I've worked with the county for eight years. Seven of those years were with Mojave County Jail. There were times where we could not take PTO time. We asked. We were shorthanded. Now I work for the justice court. It's easier to take time off, but the amount of people that are at that place, if everybody has to burn those hours, there's nobody going to be there. So if we're required to burn down all these hours that we work so hard to keep, what's going to motivate people to stay? So my question to a lot of people is, if you look at people trying to find a job, what motivates them to look for a job that isn't going to reward them to stay to retire? I want to stay. I know there's lots of people that would like to stay, but there's a lot of them that if you're required to burn so much off a year, why would you want to stay? Why do you want to come back to having to take two weeks off just to keep your hours down every month because some of us have over four hundred hours? It's just a thought. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hadley, and I believe that we'll answer some of those questions as we progress this morning. We have a second person that would like to speak on this item, Mr. Bill Whiting. Okay, if we could get your full name and address.
Yes, ma'am.
You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind.
Good morning, Mrs. Chairman Bishop and the Board of Supervisors. Some of you know who I am. Thank God for that. My name is Bill Whiting, and my residence is twenty-five thirty East Thompson Avenue. I am opposed to the current question on the agenda forty, and if it is possible, I would like to have six minutes of your time to talk. As I say, I am here today to represent my wife Carol Whiting and myself. As an employee of Mojave County on the subject of the new proposal PTO hours, we cannot represent other employees of Mojave County as their opinions may differ from ours on this subject. With this being said, my wife and I come from a generation, as well as some of y'all do. It is called the baby boomer generation. When we read a statement that there is no PTO hours, there are many PTO hours on the books, too many PTO hours on the books, we were very confused about the current policy and the past policy due to the fact that the current policy has a cap on it, which was at one time twelve hundred, now down to nine hundred to a cap. About this current policy and the past policy, to the fact of the cap on the number of hours that can be accrued and paid out when employees leave their employment. As we understand it, a past policy allowed employees to use gross amount of PTO before their actual retirement date, causing hardship on their departments and employees. That's why the old policies was changed to the current one with a cap, according to my understanding. Please listen very carefully to these words and see if you come from the same generation as Carol and I do. Dependability, responsibility, character, ethics, morals, respect, security, goals, common sense, innovation, and et cetera. These words were taught to us by our parents, teachers, and elders. We come out of high school and/or college to a work world of opportunities which we have, which we had to learn, work ethics and dependability. Some come out with a silver spoon. Most of us did not. Our parents, who couldn't give us the silver spoon, worked hard to raise us. They taught us if we wanted something, we would have to go out and work for it. That lesson of learning taught us a lot. It taught us how to earn, how to respect what we earn, and how to work hard for what we wanted, and the morals to do the right things for others, and to use our common sense when we do the job that is asked of us. That is why here in Mojave County, most of us learn how to save for our security, not only for us, but for our families. Our families depend on these PTO hours to help support them through FMLA times or other circumstances.
Mr. Whiting, we're going to have to ask you to stop now. We appreciate you coming in.
Well, ma'am, can I have a few minutes, please, because I allowed myself many, many hours for this county and directive of my gas and time for the county fairs, and come up with thousands of dollars of gifts. I think I should be able to have at least six minutes of your time.
Actually, if you want to...
And it was no cost, it was no cost to the county, what I did for the county.
If you would like to give us your written words, we'd be glad to read those, but we have an agenda and we need to keep on track. So I appreciate you very much coming in, and I would like to hear or have a copy of your written words.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What I'd like to say at this point is, the Board of Supervisors has not made a decision on this. It's a very, very taxing subject, and we appreciate our employees. We know that the PTO was a promise that we made to you, and we're trying to keep that promise. At the same time, we have a budget to live within, and the PTO has really gotten out of hand over the years, and there's reasons for that, and different boards of supervisors have made decisions based on what was going on in the county at that time. It's now our position, and we feel that we are taxed to fix what's wrong with this system, and we're trying to do it in a fair way that I think all the employees will be happy with. But all the rumors and innuendos and rumors are premature, and I would ask the employees to just be patient while we work. to just be patient while we work this out. And we've read all of your emails and your phone calls, and we appreciate those of you that came out this morning to speak. So, with that being said, I'll entertain...
Supervisor Bishop, I would like to make a statement?
Go ahead. Supervisor Angus.
I worked very hard. I've been reading everything, and I wanted to give the viewing public an idea, because if you're just tuning in and you just heard the passionate words of Mr. Whiting and the other employees, they're probably shaking their heads. They don't understand what's going on. So I just want, this is for the edification of the people out there. First and foremost, I want to say that what I'm about to say is not a reflection on the work or the work ethic of our employees. We have a great workforce, but we also have a big challenge. See, this is a finance issue, not an HR issue. Just as a source of history, several years ago, about 2011, the Employee Benefit Trust and Appointed Board were dealing with a shortfall problem with the Employee Benefit Trust. In order to save some money, the trust voted to do away with short-term disability insurance. What short-term disability is used for is if an employee becomes ill or disabled, the county's short-term insurance kicks in after a period of time and pays that employee until long-term disability kicks in. It is an optional program that some companies and governments offer, some don't. It's definitely not a mandatory program. To make up for that, and for not giving employees raises during hard times, like every business goes through, the county raised the amount of paid time off, that's what we call PTO, that an employee can receive. PTO encompasses everything, vacation day, sick day, short-term disability. It's all put into one basket. The county allows every employee to accrue what amounts to five weeks paid time off during the first year of employment. Let me point out that that does not include 11 paid holidays, one of which is a floating holiday. After one year of employment, an employee who takes no sick days or vacation days can accrue 208 hours. That's actually five weeks and one day. If you don't take, and if you put that along with the 11 vacation day, it adds up to 256 hours, which translates to seven weeks and two days. I want to reiterate that. After one year of employment, seven weeks and two days. In my research, I've discovered that Mojave County has the single most generous paid time off package in Arizona. I've heard that our wages are not aligned with other counties, and that was one of the reasons this was put in. I've not found that to be true. Most counties and municipalities separate their vacation and sick time, as I believe we should have done. And if anyone disputes this, I'd be happy to see it, and I will make a public apology for it. But the PTO carries over. Employees may accrue up to 900 hours of PTO with a payout when they leave the county's employ of a maximum of between 400 and 600 hours, based on the job they have. 400 hours is 10 weeks of pay, but there's more. Employees that were hired before, and I believe it's 1986, I'm not 100% sure on that, can accumulate up to 900 hours of payout. And these are some of our higher-paid employees, and they're some of our most valuable. When they leave, we have to give them what they are owed from their PTO. 900 hours is almost six months' pay. At that point in their career, they accrue hours at a rate they can't possibly use, but there's more. Because the cost of the PTO is attached to the position, the department that person left or retired from cannot replace that position until all the PTO is used, as if they were working, because the PTO is never budgeted or accrued for, as is standard practice for most corporations. It's almost like having a ghost employee. Directors and managers scramble to cover workloads, and remaining employees have to pick up the load, usually costing the county additional labor costs due to overtime or temporary employees. It's insane, and no public, private, or nonprofit could sustain a system like this. I want taxpayers to know how generous the county has been with your money. I do not blame the employees. If you were given benefits like this when you were being hired, you would happily take them, and you'd probably go home and dance a jig. I know I would. And when that company realizes that it is unsustainable, as we are about to, you would fight for those benefits, because that's what was promised to you. I get it. What we ask is how much liability we're looking at on the books. We were initially told it was $2.5 million. That's a big number, but not out of the realm of possibilities to work with, and that's the number we were told from Human Resources and the amount we were working for to try to formulate a change. Two weeks ago, we were given another number. That new number, the number, the amount of liability we hold on the books, if we were to pay out what we owe to our employees today, is $6,222,8252. That's quite a difference, and now truly an outrageous number. And that's why we're here. It's difficult, it's delicate, but it's an urgent problem that we have to address. We've asked staff to show us ideas to deal with it, and frankly, I don't think that you've done a very good job of coming up with viable alternatives to how we can get ourselves out of this financial and administrative mess. I propose we find a public employment lawyer and our consultant, see what we can do that's fair and legal for everyone, including the taxpayers, who seem to be forgotten in all of this. We have asked the employees and elected officials for their input, and we've received some very good ideas, along with some very strong opinions, and surprisingly to me, even a few threats. And I don't like threats. What we can do immediately is a set of new and manageable policies for new hires and those hired within the past three months. We must stop the bleeding, or this is going to come back to haunt us in ways we can't even imagine. By the way, that short-term disability they took out to save some money, we put it back this year, knowing that we were going to be having to deal with this. And how much did that insurance cost for short-term disability? It costs $150,000. So since 2011, we saved what amounts to $600,000, and now we're looking at a $6 million liability. The people who did this no longer work here. They got to leave with big payouts, and we're here cleaning up the mess. And I hope everybody understands that, and that we can all work together and make this equitable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Angus.
Supervisor Bishop, may I make a comment?
Supervisor Moss, you may. You have the floor.
I would echo everything that Supervisor Angus had said. There's really two different problems. There's a problem of new hires, which I think is very easy to deal with. We've made them no promises whatsoever. So it's just a matter of amending our personnel policies to deal with them as they come in. The biggest problem, as Supervisor Angus said, is our current employees and the many millions that we owe to them. And the bigger problem is this, when it comes to actually servicing our departments. I don't think the current suggestion on the table, which is to require all the employees to use their PTO above a certain number within the next two years, is viable, because Sheriff McKay pointed out, he would have precious new deputies on the street. And that's part of the problem in that we have created a situation, and when I say we, I'm talking about the county generically, but we're getting four times the amount of time off, as our neighboring government agencies do, and other agencies throughout the state of Arizona do. And it's like we're kind of locked in a hard place. We either pay them $6.8 million, or we gut the services that we can provide to our citizens over the next two years. I don't think that we're ready to act on the situation involving our current employees, because it's a much bigger problem than we anticipated, and it's going to need more thought. And I think that Supervisor Angus's idea of hiring a professional, an independent professional, much like we did when it came to dealing with the Lake Mojave Ranch fire district, but someone who is versed in the economics and legalities of this situation, who has some understanding of HR issues, to come in and give us some recommendations, because when it comes to our current employees, we're in a huge mess, and we need to figure it out before it becomes even a bigger mess. So, thank you for your time. I agree with Supervisor Angus on this issue, and it's something that we should engage sooner rather than later, but I don't think we can deal with our current employee situation today.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Johnson? I see you heading for the mic, so I assume you want the floor.
No, I was, but I'll talk. I think besides the issue of what people have in the books, I think we need to make a decision on what the benefits going forward are going to be, and we need to do that quickly, so that people know where they're at, where they can make the decisions for their life. As far as what we have on the books, we have to come to a decision on that, and I'd like to say that quickly, too, but maybe if it's possible, with you talking about hiring an attorney, I'd rather hire somebody afterwards to make sure what we've done is legal, but either have a committee of, say, the chair and the vice chair, or the two representatives from the Bullhead area get together and put numbers together, and maybe have, you know, people from the employees, so that they can get their input into what has worked in the past, and then bring something back, or there's some numbers, so we can say, hey, you know, I see this, and I'd like to change it. But right now, we seem to have nothing in front of us that we can debate on, or not enough information to debate anything on. And I think we have promised the people the time. I have no problem, and probably people that would disagree, but with the time they had, if we have to cut it down, we allow them to put it into a sick bank, to say, okay, here's, so they can cover that short-term disability. You know, that would take some of that off the books, but then we still have to decide how we're going to, if that's going to be a payout, or how we're going to work that. But we just have to move forward, and we have to move quickly, so that we, you know, we quit arguing over this and having our employees worried about it for the next two or three months. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor.
Supervisor Bishop, may I make a follow-up comment?
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
I want to echo also what Supervisor Johnson said, because I think that's being lost here. Some of the speakers are from our employees, and some of the emails that we received from them tend to, it seems they're making this supposition that we're going to take something from them. We can't do that. My understanding is, in any way, that we can't do that. We have to honor our commitment to them, to the point that those commitments have vested. In other words, it accrued their time, so we can't take their days, we can't take their hours. We can require them to use it, but we're not going to actually take anything from them. What we're debating, what we're truly debating, is what can they accrue going forward? That's really the issue, number one. And secondly, how do we deal with the current mess that we have, with what they have now? Do we require them to take time off? If so, over what time period? What the effect of service is going to be? Things of that nature? Or are we going to write a check, which we obviously cannot afford, since we're already overextended? But nobody, nobody is talking about taking away what a current employee has. What we're discussing, we may be discussing a mechanism to deliver that benefit to them. We may be discussing the timeframe in which to deliver that benefit to them, but we are not taking that benefit away. What we are discussing, which may be of interest to some employees, is how much of the benefit can they accrue in the future? So it's really those two issues. So nobody is taking anything from everyone. I think Supervisor Johnson is absolutely correct. We're going to honor our commitments. What we're discussing is how do we deliver that benefit, and how much of the benefit will they accrue in the future? That's really the two topics of discussion, from my understanding, of these personnel policy proposed changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very well stated, and I think we all agree with that. I think the question right now is, do we want to schedule a workshop, or do we want to have a special meeting where we can make some decisions? So, you know, that's kind of where I think we should be directed, and we need to do it as soon as possible, because the morale is being damaged by this. People are speculating and trying to second-guess what we don't know yet what we're going to do, so they're trying to guess as to what we might do, and it's damaging to our people. So whatever we decide sooner than later, I think is the direction I'd like to see taken. Supervisor Watson, do you have anything?
Yes, a couple comments, and I appreciate Supervisor Moss's comments, fair and equitable, and we need to be addressing them as soon as we can. And I agree with you, Chairman, that we need to address this in a special meeting. Meeting set aside precisely to meet the challenges of this issue. So if we can set a date, I would appreciate that we could have a special meeting on this and make sure that those employees that want to attend this meeting can.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Well, I appreciate Supervisor Watson's attempt to get another meeting out, which I'm sure he'll get. I don't see the benefit of the meeting, to me. I would rather see something on the table to begin with, to work with, I guess, instead of, well, if I have a sitting there, so if, I mean, that's my whole thing, if we assign two supervisors and say, all right, put a plan together, and, you know, don't be such an owner of it that you're going to get, you know, butthurt if it gets changed, you know, but, you know, something to come forward that way, where they can meet with the employee, you know, a couple of representatives or something, and then bring it forward at a regular board meeting, I guess. Because I think we're all adults. We can make the decision once it's in front of us, but I think if five of us sitting there, everybody throwing ideas out, we're going to have to have two or three of them. That would be my whole thing.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we call a special meeting on June the 25th to discuss the personnel policies and procedures.
June 25 is, I'm unable to attend, I believe I'll be gone.
Supervisor Bishop, I would have the exact same problem, because I'll be driving my children home from Pennsylvania, where they're currently visiting with their grandparents.
Okay, the 26th. Is anybody available on that date? I just think we need to set a date, and, you know, it can be changed. I believe, Madam Clerk, can we change the date if it doesn't work?
You can change the, however, if one member cannot or does not attend, you have to have a five-day leave notice.
Supervisor Angus.
Well, I think that the issue that Supervisor Johnson said is, you know, are we starting from scratch, or are we going to start with an idea in front of us? Like I said in my presentation, I wasn't crazy about the ideas that were put out there. I just wasn't. And so I think you guys need to go back to the drawing board, maybe take into consideration some of the things that we talked about today, and put some other viable options out there, hopefully being run through legal and like that. So like Supervisor Johnson said, that perhaps it would be best to come up with something and then run it by legal, you know, and so maybe that would save some money. Instead of, I would like to have a consultant who knows this, because I think we are treading in some dangerous waters here, and I don't want to waste a lot of time. But I'm open to what the supervisors want, but like him, I would like to see something, so we're not just sitting there, starting from scratch.
If I could, Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Supervisor Angus, and Supervisor Moss, floor is yours.
I have, I agree with both Supervisor Johnson and Supervisor Angus. We are treading in dangerous waters, because when we're government, and when we talk about taking away our property rights, which is what the conception is, or the impression, rather, which is incorrect. We're not taking away any property rights. That is a dangerous ground, and that's why structuring things going forward may require a professional assistance. But we also have to deal with our current departments and directors and department heads, because when it comes to eliminating the damage by requiring employees to take time off over some time, we have to do so in a way which is not imperil the sheriff's department, county attorney's office, and others from providing the services that we need. And so what I would suggest is a twofold process, and this is just a suggestion. I believe I can draft an idea, a starting point for discussion, which would be ready by the next board meeting, and I can present what I would think would be some detailed suggestions. If that proposal is accepted by the board, and of course, the board could amend and supplement and expand and contract it all it likes at the next meeting, we can take that proposal and send it off to a professional opinion, to get it, as Supervisor Angus suggested, to ensure that that what we're suggesting will work, and we will not get ourselves in hot water. And I believe that could all be accomplished from start to finish with the next 30 to 40 days. So, it would just, you know, require us to have that proposal by the next board meeting, so we can discuss it, and then we can send it off to an expert to review, outside expert, someone who has no, because any play we use within the county obviously has an axe in the game, they have some skin in the game, and we could send it out to the outside expert for them to comment and give us advice, and then we can finally move on a final conclusion, all within three or four board meetings.
Okay, thank you. And with that information, I will withdraw my motion. If you want to restate what you just said in a simpler manner, to where we can have that in the form of a motion?
I hereby move that I, or any other board member who chooses to present a proposal to this board regarding the PTO policy for current and future employees, may present that at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, that whatever policy is adopted at that next regularly scheduled board meeting, after the supervisors debate and amend or add to the issue, will then be presented to an outside expert to be named at a future date, hopefully at the next board meeting, in order to review and advise this board on what appropriate action to take, and to be brought back to us as soon as practically convenient following that outside expert's review, so that we can improve a final policy regarding future and current employees.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Did the clerk of the board get all of that? It's recorded, okay.
Sorry, but it seems it's very lengthy, so, because there's really multiple issues we have to dissect here. So it's not just one simple issue.
All right. We do have a motion, and...
I will second that very long motion.
All right. Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so be it. Motion passes. Okay, going on to item number 41. Uh, this is, this is under your name Supervisor Moss. Discussion...
Um, Madam Chair, it's, what it comes down to is, my understanding from the clerk, is that we've already removed this issue from the agenda. However, since prior to that, we selected a date certain in which to consider it, um, had to be put back on the agenda even though we decided to take no action on that issue. So all that I think is required at the present time is that we take, vote to take no action or we just take no action. I think Attorney Exum or, or our clerk can give us, whether my understanding is correct, but this is really something that's already been resolved.
Okay, uh, County Administrator Hendrix.
Um, Madam Chairman, I believe you could entertain a motion to take action on this item. I'd take no action on this item.
Okay. Thank you. And that was item 41. Okay, going on to item number 42. Setting as the Board of Directors, of Directors of the Mojave County Television Improvement District. Discussion and possible action reference implementation of an emergency alert broadcasting system to deliver important emergency information such as weather information, amber alerts, and local incident information targeted to specific areas.
Motion to discuss?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion to discuss, seconded. Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
Okay, we're talking about this again. I think everyone knows where I stand on the, on the television district. Um, and we've, we've really discussed this ad nauseam, this idea about, um, putting an emergency broadcasting channel. Again, I, I don't, I can't understand why we would spend $100,000 to put in a system to service a small amount of people that we don't even know in a system that will probably be obsolete soon, um, to warn them about an emergency that might entail having no electricity, which would mean they couldn't watch the television. But we already talked about that. But I'd like, um, I was thinking about something else and I'd like the county attorney to give us an opinion on the county's liability based upon its assumption of the duty to warn. Has anyone thought about that? Do we have any liability? I mean, if we're telling people, if they're watching and then there's a flash flood coming or flood coming and they're gonna be warned if it doesn't come on, do we have any liability on that now that we're making the big mistake that the county now, we're gonna be giving them a, a service that is not mandated? Um, and, and I, I think it could hold us to some liability.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, because of the nature of this, it's emergency services, I think you have much more protection than you would have with just some other county program or project. So I, I don't view it as an issue that would create liability.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to say that...
If I could, Supervisor Bishop?
Um, yes, Supervisor Moss. Do you have the floor?
I, I'm kinda curious and I really would, I wanna echo Supervisor Angus's comments here about the duty to warn issue. Because what it comes down to, for example, is the county has very frequently been sued because of road signs, um, regarding, or not having road signs or, if we do or we do not, we're, we're, if we take, undertake a duty to warn of conditions or we fail to provide warning of conditions, the county gets sued. So I'm kind of making this an equivalence of a road sign issue, um, that we either have or do not have and which either way it seems like we can get sued over. But really it's something that I think needs to be resolved more than just an off-the-cuff, I don't think we really have that much liability. Um, it seems to me that past history indicates that there could be some liability and we want to make sure that when it comes to our doing due diligence, we take the time to investigate that issue.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Moss. And, you know, I just wanted to, um, to, to remind everybody that it, I was for and then I was against and then I was the middle of the road. And I've, I've been very confused about this and I've spent a lot of, lot of time, a lot of hours studying the possible ramifications that could impact Mojave County if the TV district was dissolved or privatized. The TV district is, is more than just 27 channels of entertainment and it's more than just 13 towers owned by Mojave County and various parts of the county. There are additional sites, I've learned, that are owned by WECOM that intertwined in, in this system. And there's also a government-only site on BLM land that covers the Arizona Strip. WECOM owns, um, the, the sites called Hayden, Smith Peak, and Getz. And they also own the TV equipment at those sites. So it's, it's very complex. There's more than Mojave County that's involved in this, there's, there's other owners. The towers are used for more than just TV broadcasts. They also house public safety equipment and antennas for the sheriff's office. Uh, there's BLM equipment, there's road department, uh, equipment, city, state, game and fish. So based on, on the fact that this is so complex, I, I think it would be very, very difficult to dissolve it or privatize it. So based on what a fellow supervisor said one time, if we can't dissolve it, let's make it the best that it can be. So I'm leaning toward the emergency broadcast system because it will broadcast local information. It won't be broadcast from the state of Maricopa or Phoenix. It'll be things that are happening right here, like the fire just outside of Wiki up in the Walupi Mountains and, and the one that was near Pine Lake and, and our flooding conditions that we routinely get up in the Arizona Strip. So, um, because it will give local information, I've, I've given it a little more thought and weight and, and I don't think we should abolish the TV district. I, I think the people that have contacted me have convinced me that, that this is something that, that people expect and they've had it for so many years, it's, it's hard to take away an entitlement, if that's what you wanna call it. But, um, it's, it's there, people appreciate it and they don't mind paying the taxes for it. And, and so with, with that...
Supervisor Bishop, if I may?
Um...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to finish off by saying, I think it's extremely important for emergency messages to have a redundant way to, to get to the public. So that's all I had to say and, uh, I'll give you the floor now Supervisor Moss.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop. There's really multiple issues that are wrapped up in the TV district. Um, the fact that it's so entangled and intertwined as you described it, which is true, I believe that to be true, is a reason for us not to be involved in it because where our responsibilities and duties begin and end in the current mess are unknown. I mean, there really is so much gray area there, um, we're just asking for trouble, in my opinion. So that's one issue. The second issue is, the TV district is something which every single property owner in Mojave County pays for, but a small percentage get the benefit of. So when it's, when it comes to the, the opinion that, well, people really don't mind, I, I mind and I believe there's many people out there who do mind, um, on that TV district. Which leads to another issue is, we are in economic bad times, we want to grow Mojave County. There's two things which are always an impediment to growth, regulations and taxes. If we got rid of the TV district, we can get rid of the tax, which would help growth, which will help economic development. And then there's a public policy issue, two of them, as a matter of fact, that both interrelated. We are the only county that I'm aware of in the American Southwest which has a TV district, which runs a TV district. Um, I don't know of one in Colorado or Utah or anywhere else. Um, I've heard there might be one up someplace far north. Uh, but there's a reason for that, I believe. And not only is it just the tax consequences, um, burdening, you know, every, it's just a little bit what people will say, well, you keep loading a bunch of feathers on a camel's back and eventually the camel's back has been a break. But the public policy issue here is, is it a good idea for government to be involved in television? Because if the Mojave County controls this TV district, and we do, we're one step away from saying what is going to be on that television district. Which means essentially, we're one step away from being communist Russia and we're running our own broadcast station. And we're not doing that now, but we've taken a path along that road. And I think when it comes to government being involved in news, the First Amendment, the broadcast of news, it's a horrible idea. And so that we really need to step back from that. When it comes to the, to the channels I've heard, the, the Western channels and all the rest of that, yeah, it provides entertainment. But are we gonna be, model ourselves after the Roman Republic, which was a strong, vibrant, growing entity? Or are we gonna model ourselves after the Roman Empire, which means essentially that we're, our job is to provide bread and circuses for our citizens? I think it's a, for those two reasons, government does not belong in this area. We should pull out, we should give some tax relief, we should do what we can to privatize it, and if we can't do that, we should let it last. Those are my comments on TV district.
Thank you very much Supervisor Moss.
If I may, Chairman Bishop, this was under my, uh, as District One. And I can appreciate the, uh, the positions of both Supervisor Moss and Supervisor Angus. And probably, uh, in those districts, the TV district is not used as much as it is in District Number One, District Number Four, and District Number Three. Um, I brought this to, to us to realize the importance of this emergency information and specifically, uh, it addresses District Number One and District Number Four in those areas in which we have forest fires and severe flooding and those items. And that's why I'm bringing this, uh, to a decision today. I'd like to make a motion for the implementation of the Emergency Alert Broadcast System to deliver important emergency information such as weather, amber alerts, and local incident information targeted to specific areas. And that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second.
I have one, just one more question.
Yes.
Because it's not in any of the backup. So we got how much this thing is gonna cost to implement, but is, are there any ongoing costs? What is the, we, I didn't see it. If it's in there, I apologize, but I didn't see it.
Uh, Madam Chairman, if I could, could I have Byron Stewart come down and try to address that?
Absolutely. I see him come in this direction, so. Mr. Stewart, thank you very much and please enlighten us.
Uh, Madam Chair and Supervisor Angus, I, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to defer to, to our representatives from WECOM, but my understanding is, is once you get the, the primary equipment in place, there's gonna be very little ongoing costs if it's like our, our existing EAS system where we have our encoders in place and, and in this case we have to, to put in some antennas and some, some other things on, on the Hayden Peak to be able to, to break into the channels. But it's my understanding there's not gonna be a great deal of ongoing costs. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah, that, that was my understanding. There's probably very little ongoing cost in it. Once you get your initial equipment in place, it's, it's pretty much just a matter of implementing it and, and, and testing it from time to time to be, being sure everything's working correctly.
And, and you're not worried about liability, duty to warn?
Uh, I've been an emergency manager for, I have to add it up now, 16 years in Kansas and here. And it is pretty much standard nationwide in all of our emergency plans that we have , uh, public warning systems in place and, and we have it in our plans that that's what we're, uh, one of our, uh, primary duties is, is to, to try to get the word out to the public if there's something going on that, that could endanger them. Uh, so, and that's one of the reasons why we try to have redundant systems so that...
Right, well, I mean, just for people, we do that now.
We do that now. And, and so, um, it is something that I think is pretty much accepted as the standard across the country, um, for, in it, to be able to provide those warnings. Uh, in terms of your question that you had earlier about, you indicated that, well, if we have a power outage, we won't be able to warn people and, and that is true. But most of our emergency alert system messages are sent out when a, when an incident is impending, such as a wildfire or a, a storm coming in. So we're actually doing the warnings before there's any impact to the infrastructure. Obviously, if it, if it impacts, then we won't be able to use it after the fact if the electricity is out unless people do have battery-powered radios or that type of thing, which is what we try to, to encourage them to do.
Mr. Stewart, I, I have a question, kind of the reverse. Uh, what is the liability if, if something happens and we have voted against this, having, having the money and, and the equipment and the ability to enhance our, our, is, is there any reverse liability that we don't act?
Well, I, we, we have other systems in place. So it's not like this is the only system that, that we have. Now, this will reach some people that, that may not have access to some of those other systems. Uh, and which is why it's, it's, it's a good redundancy because I think I mentioned in our last meeting, there's a number of systems we either have in place or we're trying to get in place, once we get grant funding available, hopefully, uh, that we'll be able to reach out to the public. But each of those systems have drawbacks and so the more redundancy we have, uh, and the more, more people we're able to reach. But in terms of just this one system, not having it in place for any liability for that, I, I would defer to, to Mr. Exum on that, but, but to me, I don't think, uh, that would be a particular issue.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. And then one other thing I just wanted to bring up, uh, one of the reasons there's, there's so much, um, money in this TV district fund, from what I understand, was that when the, the, the high-definition television was coming, we prepared for extra money to pay for the conversion of that. And, and then the federal government came along and, and paid those expenses and we did not have to. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that's, that's one of the reasons, something we had planned for that we didn't need. So, so we have some, some extra money in there and, uh, I'd like to, to, to see the emergency broadcast system enhanced and I'd also like to see the tax reduced when, when we go through the budget process, so.
Just to, excuse me, can I just ask a question of what you just said? Was it, was it mandated by law that we go to digital?
Yes, yes.
It was mandated by law, that, even a, a government thing, it had to go.
Right. That's why they gave away or charged 10 buck. We gave everybody that had a, the federal government gave everybody an antenna or something, some kind of an upgrade box they had to begin with.
The man that paid for it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much Byron.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think, when I first retired, I lived in Parker and, and Parker doesn't have a TV. So I had no television and the radio station went off at four o'clock every day. So we were really in the dark down there with, as far as emergency broadcast or any kind of entertainment, which obviously La Paz County needs. I would like to see us continue to expand the, the system we have because I, I really, I can't reiterate it enough. I think we're gonna be hit, uh, like I said, not so much Mojave County, but, um, the bigger cities and we'll be left out of the loop for somebody coming to fix our, our, our power or whatever it is. I think the emergency services and the county's done an excellent job of preparing for that. But I think the number one thing is gonna be the panic of the public and, and I think we need with our generator system, we can still broadcast signals out. I think it's, it's only as good as if the people take advantage of it. So we've got to get out and say, folks, in case of an emergency, it's gonna last longer than two days, um, you're gonna have to have something to be able to receive our information so that you know where to go to get water or, you know, people, a lot of people have oxygen tanks where we can come out and, because we have that, that ability to come out and, you know, keep those, uh, charged up. Uh, we, we set up an excellent program as far as, you know, I mean, you just figure about all the animals that people have, you know, that are gonna be worried about the dog food and the water and things like that. So I'm in support of this. Other questions?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, so I'll vote aye and it's three yes and two no. Motion passes.
I think Madam, Madam Chair, I may just add on to that. If, if there is a, a groundswell of people, there's a petition process that we put us on the ballot where you could vote against it too, so, you know, give the people a chance to vote.
Okay, understand. All right, going on to item 43A. Discussion of possible action reference to reconsider the June 1st, 2015, item number 32. Acknowledge abandonment application proposal from Steve Kirby to abandon River Avenue a 50-foot wide by seven, seven, eight-foot-long legacy dedication by a 1961 Bermuda plantation subdivision map containing .87 acres located in the Mojave Valley area and approve processing said abandonment in the same manner and under the same procedure for abandoning county highways per ARS 286709 and authorize public works to serve notice and solicit public comment for the purpose of further considering said abandonment as provided in ARS Title 28, Chapter 20, Article 8, upon satisfactory completion of the requirements defined under ARS 286701C.
Madam Chair, make a motion for reconsideration.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, what was the count?
It was 32.
Okay. All right, going on to item 43B. We have one person signed up to speak on that, Stephen Kirby. Mr. Kirby, if you would like to come down and share with us your thoughts this morning.
Good morning Board, and everyone, Supervisors. The way that I took it, I read the paper in Mojave Valley News every day, and it said that it was okayed for the abandonment, and then I was told by Randy Allison that it wasn't. Oh, excuse me, my name's Steve Kirby, I live at 1186 Dyke Road, Mojave Valley. I'm not used to speaking at all, I'm an old warehouseman, but what I was going to talk about it to, it has never been maintained, it's a liability to the county. I was told to go for the abandonment, because it would help the county, because it will be up for, I would have to pay for it, me and, actually, I'm on the east side, my neighbor, the Wegners are on the west side, it would be split in half, you know, for each side, because I have been in a trailer, or mobile home, or on a house on Dyke Roads at 79, 1979, and I bought this property on 1186 Dyke Road in 95, and I have never seen a car on that road in the back, as far as getting to it. I was, I've talked to Jason Foose, actually Stephen Latauski, he's been out there. It is sugar sand going to our Dyke Road, it is used right now just by people on their ATVs, this and that. I took care of the property for, up until three years ago, and then I was told that I, after I had, I don't even get into that one. But I would just say that I could help the county out, if they do sell it to me, it'll be a tax for the county, which they're always talking about, that they're hurting for money. It'll be another tax, which I pay a lot of taxes up there on the Dyke Road, and it would help out the county, if you say that your budget is very bad. It is just sitting there right now, doing nothing. There is a liability, because we just had a storm Saturday, the crevice that it makes going down is, it went like three foot wider in the road. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. This is item 43B, discussion of possible action reference, acknowledge abandonment, application proposal by Steve Kirby to abandon River Avenue, 50-foot wide by 778 feet long legacy dedication by a 1961 Bermuda plantation subdivision map, containing .87 acres located in Mojave Valley area, and approve processing said abandonment in the same manner and under the same procedure for abandoned county highways per ARS 286709, and authorize Public Works to serve notice and solicit public comment for the purpose of further considering said abandonment as provided in ARS Title 28, Chapter 20, Article 8, upon satisfactory completion of requirement defined under ARS 286701C. So I'll entertain a motion.
Do you need a motion? Or make a motion to deny the request?
Okay, we have a motion to deny, do we have a second? I'll second it, just out of courtesy. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I can make a comment, Madam Chair, before we vote?
Yes, Supervisor Moss.
There's really, what we voted on, I think it was roughly two weeks or a month ago on this, was the first step of a multi-step process. And basically, we're telling the, I think it's Public Works, to go through and start the process, which means they got to get an appraisal at Mr. Kirby's neighbor's expense, they have to go out to public comments, so people can talk about it. And if, at the end of the day, we as a board in the future decide that we're going to include this abandonment, it comes back to us to vote on, with Mr. Kirby and his neighbor paying fair market value. The danger to this area, and I'm familiar with it, is it is, it goes nowhere, it's a road to nowhere, essentially. It's not contained, there's not an ounce of asphalt, there's never been a blade that I know of going down it. And it's a hazard, it's a hazard because the trees that are growing up in that area, which we do not maintain, but they're going to fall over someday and crack into a house. It's a hazard because of the crevices that Mr. Kirby disguised, because the only one who's going to use that road might be an ATVer. And one day, they're going to go into that crevice, and they're going to break their full neck, and we're going to be on the spot for it, just like people who go running off into mine shafts. This is something which we need to get rid of and make it an income-producing property for the county. I believe the board made the right decision originally, and why it's back, I have no idea.
Madam Chair?
Thank you Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Johnson?
Can I bring Mr. Latauski in, please? This was on a previous agenda before that and denied. This is riverfront property we're talking about, this is the only access out there that the public has to get to the river. We've gone through this before, where somebody had blocked access to that public land, where we had to have it removed. Mr. Latauski, maybe you can explain a little bit of the history of this?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, this particular River Avenue is a 50-foot right-of-way that was established with the plating of Bermuda Plantation Subdivision. It does provide river access, and 50-foot, be the frontage of river access. .87 acres total. This is the first step of a three-step process by which the staff seeks board acknowledgement and referral to staff to initiate the public notification process. It's after this first step, if the board were to consent, that we would, as staff, collect the $500 application fees, so.
I sent a $600 check, it was already sent to me, and I sent it out.
With regard to the history of River Avenue, it is not maintained by Mojave County, however, it is a right-of-way administered by Mojave County. In 2002, in response to a service comment, Public Works did discover the River Avenue right-of-way was blocked from public access from Dyke Road to the Colorado River. The applicant for this abandonment, Mr. Steve Kirby, as well as his neighbor to the north, the Wegners, had erected fencing blocking access, as well as had other encroachments in River Avenue. Public Works diligently facilitated the removal of all encroachments, namely by Mr. Kirby, who did take the lead, except for the native trees.
Did you tell them I had permits for everything that was there? I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
I just want to point out, there is no other public access down there for the public who wants to get to the water, and I believe this was left as a reason for that when the Unimoms was put in. This, while we can talk about it, having water running through it, or a rut running through it, this is valuable riverfront property, and I don't believe that we should be giving up the public's access to the river. That's all I have.
Have I referred to that? There's no public that come down, it's off of Dyke Road, it is in the back, which you know is Levy Drive, which is, it's almost covered by brush already, you can hardly get back to it. You drive by where this is, it's all covered by brush, because I'm not maintaining it anymore over three years. I lost my wife two and a half years ago because of all the anxiety that we went through, and you know we went through it a lot, I know Steve, we worked, tried to work together. I did everything that I could, tried to make our community better-looking. I've done everything, and I tried to do everything that I could to get rid of it, cost me a lot of money to try to fix up, and now, in the last three years, the county has not done anything to it, it is a fire hazard, it makes my property look like nothing compared to what I pay in taxes for. So I'm trying to help Mojave County, because you're saying you're in debt all the time. We're going at a far market value, there's no, I know you're talking about public action, there's no public that comes down there, because it is in the back by Levy Road, they have to go Dyke Road, which is a public, a private road to get to it, come down. And half the time, if anybody comes down, they go on everybody else's beach.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby, we appreciate your comments. Director Latauski, do you have anything else to add?
I believe the board does have a location map available in their packet, but I can't provide just a proximity map.
Yeah, if you could put that on the overhead. Thank you.
The road is situated north of Harbor Avenue, State Road 95, and is accessible via Levy Drive, which is a public right-of-way, as well as Dyke Road, which is a private road.
I make a comment on the back, you would see on both sides how cleaned up it is, and the road itself is cleaned, that was because, that picture's taken back when I used to maintain it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kirby. All right, anything else, Mr. Latauski? All right, thank you, we do have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay, I will vote to deny. Motion passes to deny. Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Will someone come out and do something to the road now, or help it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 44, it's start for, I'd like to, actually, it's start for executive session, I'd like to move that to the end of the agenda. So we'll move on to item number 45. Discussion of possible action reference, approve an addendum to the fee agreement for representation with Carlos Ronstadt to include a not-to-exceed increase of $30,000 for a total engagement amount of $115,000, an extension of the contract period to September 30th, 2015, with all other terms and conditions remaining the same, and approve a general fund contingency transfer to General Administration Legal Services 101-0500-431.10.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve, second?
Second motion.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Can we adjourn and then go into executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, and we'll move into executive session and discuss item number 44.
Can we take a few minutes for a break?
Yes.
Let's go ahead, can you get yours pulled first, I tell you.